Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the work session for September 10th, City of Lynchburg, City Council. First on our work session agenda items is, number one, to continue discussion regarding zoning ordinance amendments for short-term rental uses, and I'll turn to our city manager, Ms. Saverchek.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. When we last met, we spent a significant amount of time talking about the zoning ordinance and short-term rentals, and you asked staff to go back and make adjustments and bring additional information back to you, and so that is what we are doing today, and we are hoping that at the end of today's discussion on this item that you will adopt changes to the zoning ordinance and we can move forward. So Kent White, Director of Community Development, is making the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Saverchek.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and members of council, the purpose of our presentation is to review where you landed last month with your discussion of ordinance requirements and finalize the remaining details which include grandfathering, occupancy, and registration. Just for a reminder for our viewers at home, short-term rentals are the provision for lodging for less than 30 days for charge. Popular platforms include Airbnb, VRBO, Expedia, et cetera. So based on the direction you gave staff at your August 13th meeting, the ordinance currently requires the following: that short-term rentals would be allowed by right in all residential and commercial zoning districts, as well as institutional too; all structures used as short-term rental must meet building code; in the RC and R1 low-density residential neighborhoods, the building used as a short-term rental must be the operator's primary residence, and the structures must be maintained to the appearance of a single household home. However, council decided to grandfather existing non-owner-occupied units that are operating at the time that the ordinance is adopted, and Mr. Martin will review the details of the grandfathering provision with you in just a moment. And no additional parking space would be required for the short-term rental unit as currently proposed. The city would sign an agreement with Airbnb to collect lodging tax on the reservations made through their platform. Those taxes would be charged to the guest when they book, which saves the host from remitting directly to the city. This is estimated to generate approximately $84,000, although initial signs are that that figure may be even higher, and it would cover about 90 percent of the hosts that are currently operating in Lynchburg. The city would also contract with a third party to identify the location of short-term rental units operating throughout the city, and using that information, the Commissioner of Revenue's office would work with hosts that list on other platforms to voluntarily remit their lodging tax. The ordinance would become effective immediately, and operators would be required to register by July 1 of 2020. In the coming months, staff will work to notify operators in advance the registration deadline so they're aware of the requirement. Those hosts that did not fail to register would be subject to a $500 penalty. And the city may revoke approval for three ordinance violations in three years related directly to the short-term rental. At council's direction, the ordinance has been clarified so that the violations would be specifically related to the use. You can see some examples on the screen, as opposed to the structure itself. So with that brief overview, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Martin and then Mr. Knuckles, who will walk you through the outstanding issues. For each of the items, staff will kind of pause after their overview to provide you with time to deliberate and finalize your decision.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm going to be going over three topics in order to gain clarification and consensus from council. Those topics are going to be owner occupancy, the grandfathering provision, and the number of occupants allowed in a short-term rental. So at the August 13th council work session, staff was directed to remove the owner occupancy provision for the R2 low-to-medium-density residential district. The city's single-household neighborhoods are comprised of three main districts: the RC conservation districts, these are single-household detached dwellings on 10-acre lot sizes; the R1 district, which is the single, also allows single-household detached dwellings on 15,000 square foot; and the R2, which council directed staff to remove, is also only single-household detached dwellings on 10,000 square-foot lot sizes. So if those areas are removed, the neighborhoods such as Wild Wind, Blue Ridge Farms, Phillips Circle, Willow Bend, Woodland, Riverside, Perrymont, Fort Hill, and Tyriana would not have the owner occupancy provision in it. So staff wanted to clarify that it is, in fact, council's intent to not have the owner occupancy requirement applied to the R2 district.
Mr. Nelson, Councilmember Nelson?
I did not have a comment. I don't have any objection to that.
I thought you looked at me to... Okay.
I think that's all right, too.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wright? I see.
I guess I fail to see what the difference is. I'm curious if other councilmembers are able to identify why exclude R2 from the owner occupancy and not R1. What's, I guess fundamentally, what's the real difference there? I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we would eliminate, why we'd separate out R2.
I guess one thing maybe a little bit different would be the fact of why would we have R1 in there? I mean, last time you were arguing why we shouldn't have owner occupancy, so, which I agreed wholeheartedly with you on, and so now you're going the other direction and going further, but I'd like us to see us, I really don't see the benefit of having the owner occupancy required even in R1. I mean, so having it in R2 and RC, you know, we threw out some things last time. Now it's when the rubber is going to meet the road on this, either if we vote today or as we're discussing on actual implementation. So I agree with you on the first time that I don't know how you have a requirement that somebody has to own, it has to be owner-occupied when you don't have that same requirement. You know, normally when you rent something for a longer period of time, there's more possibility for trouble. If you rent something for one day as opposed to 360 days, so if you can allow a rental for 360 days in an R1, but for some reason now, whatever quirk of nature happens, when you rent it for one day, you can't do it unless it's owner-occupied. Now, that to me is unbelievably mind-boggling, and so, which I appreciated your discussion on it last time, and I agreed wholeheartedly. I mean, it's normally, you know, when you tell kids you can have one cookie, but you can't have four dozen cookies. There's a reason you can't have four dozen cookies. So I don't understand how this would be exclusion requiring somebody to be owner-occupied in an R1.
Vice Mayor Dole, I think we voted on this last, our last meeting. Are we going to rehash it again?
This is when the rubber meets the road.
Did we cast an affirmative vote, or was it just a consensus?
Consensus.
Well, consensus is everybody.
No, it wasn't everybody.
Yeah.
I think there's a vote on it as far as for staff to bring something back. Staff is now bringing something back, and now we still got lots of discussion.
We want to make sure that you, zoning districts, we work with them other day, every day, and sometimes zoning districts can get confusing, and we want to make sure that council understands that the R2 is a single-household district just like the R1, and not to get confused that the 2 means duplex, because it does not. And if it's intent of council to not have the owner occupancy in the R2, fine, but we want to make sure that you understand what it is you're passing when you do it.
Councilmember Perrow?
I'm reading the minutes as we're talking. I see something that says that Vice Mayor Dole made a motion to require owner occupancy in RC1 and 2 districts, and it was seconded by Wilder, but I don't see a recorded vote. So...
Well, that's why it was, I'm sorry to interrupt, couldn't go ahead, I'm sorry. I thought it was my understanding that we, this was across the city in the residentials: RC, R1, R2. That was my understanding, and so I'm hearing now that the R2 would be pulled out as not for owner occupancy.
What we had in our notes is that...
How was your motion?
For R2?
No, no, not for R2, to pull out R2.
Only in RC and R1.
In an ideal world, I would have included RC.
Well, we already voted on it, what you just said.
I kind of acquiesced to the R2.
So it was a 5-2 split?
Otherwise, I don't think we would have gotten the vote.
Right, okay.
That was a compromise on my part.
So council's already voted for RC and R1 to be owner-occupied, unless you, unless the prevailing group would like to bring this up again?
That's our intention. Open for discussion?
I would like to discuss that, because in the neighborhoods that you were, please say again the neighborhoods you were giving as examples.
Wild Wind.
That would not be under the owner occupancy rule.
So all of the darker-yellow areas here, Wild Wind, Blue Ridge Farms, Phillips Circle, Willow Bend, Woodland, Riverside, Perrymont, Fort Hill, and Tyriana, all of those areas would not have it. There are single-family districts also, the only thing difference is a slightly smaller lot size.
Right. I would like to include R2, and I have my reason for doing that, and I understand. So I'm interested in hearing from others.
So is this a motion to reconsider? Because this is a decided matter.
I would like a motion to reconsider that for the inclusion of discussion regarding including R2.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. All right, ready? Take your vote. All right, thank you. The motion passes 5 to 2. I will defer my conversation. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really thinking out loud on this one. Originally, I was pleased to see the R2 pulled out, but in the interim, upon considering what's the difference between the R1 and R2, I guess we're talking about the square footage of the lot.
Yes, sir.
We're not talking about anything else concerning the structure of the building, just how big is the lot?
The only difference is the lot size, yes.
I don't know that I can identify anything tangible or theoretical that makes a smaller lot have some different qualifications than a larger lot. When we look at why we have residential neighborhoods, and we zone them for residential, exclusively to residential purposes, we're looking at aspects that deal with keeping the density lower, keeping the traffic count lower, keeping the volume of persons who come and go lower, preventing it from having a commercial character so that there's peace and tranquility where people live, sleep, and their families play. So the lot size, to me, is somewhat irrelevant to the things that would qualify why we want to have residential neighborhoods and not inject commercial activities into those places. So for that reason, I don't see any rational basis to differentiate between R1, RC, or R2 when we're talking about the property being the primary residential dwelling of the owner if it's going to be used as a short-term rental facility. And that's all I have to say about this. I have a lot of other questions, but that's on this motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Further discussion from anyone?
Okay, well, I will just say that when I listen to this with the neighborhoods and I look at the potential for, when I look at property values and turnover of properties, and some of these are more affordable properties that could potentially be used for commercial use, more so than the larger lots, as Councilmember Nelson said, and I don't think it's fair to those neighborhoods, because there was the concern of discussion regarding neighborhoods being turned into, I did receive an email today, hotel neighborhoods, and so the idea that some communities would have this thrust upon them just because of their lot size, when it's still the same activity and it's a residential area and neighborhood, I would not want to change the character of neighborhoods, because when you look at larger lot sizes, you're looking at increased home lot sales, whatever, and so I'm thinking that more affordable properties for this type of business would be in the neighborhoods that we would exclude owner occupancy, which means that would grow. And so that's why I am in favor of including R2 for the sake of those neighborhoods, as well as the R1 and RCs.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if we, if the motion is made to include R2 with RC and R1, we would still want to caveat or include the same qualifier that we did in the last discussion, that folks who are already operating in those neighborhoods that are, that do not, are not currently practicing owner occupancy would be grandfathered in under this ordinance.
Councilmember Helgason, and then Perrow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know what, when we're, I know, I know we're going to kind of get in the weeds again, but before we get in the weeds, I'll just kind of mindful of something that happened years ago before, I don't know if any other councilmembers were on here, I know I was, where our former director of planning said there's some new technology, and with this new technology, we've got to act, because without us acting as a government, this new technology is going to be a distraction to drivers, they're going to get in car accidents, there's going to be, we're going to be like Las Vegas with neon lights, we're going to have so much trouble that we have got to enact this sign ordinance right away and stop the banning of the new technology, which are electronic reader boards, which are electronic billboards. So with that, oh, that was, this fear was put out there, that all of these negative things are going to happen. We voted it down, I voted for it, I said why, and I thought it was a good thing, and it wasn't all these things that were going to be so bad as was suggested and pushed by our former director of planning. With that, later on, people realized, oh, that was totally bogus. All of these pushed concerns were actually fictitious. They were all inflated, they could have been there, sure, granted, because they're fearful of new technology and fearful of something new, and so at the first time, council said, no, we're not going to do this. A few years later, they realized they're everywhere. They realized they're in Campbell County, they realized they're in Bedford County, they realized how beautiful they were, how great they were, because people care about their own property. People were putting up signs, they're not putting up junk, they're putting up nice things, and council realized that. They realized, wow, we were somewhat duped from the first blush of this, and I'm seeing this lived out again. I'm seeing this exact same thing by the fact of we're seeing lots of problems that we're anticipating. Again, there were 11 complaints over the entire city of 23,000 to 25,000 housing units. Every day, somebody could rent something out, there were 11 complaints. So when you look at a percentage of complaints or problems, minuscule, and so let's, you know, granted, we may say, oh, well, we got to do something right away, we got to do something before we understand even what we're looking at. Let's adopt something, because one neighborhood complained, are there 11 complaints across a city of 50 square miles, so we got to do something. We got to, rather than looking and saying, how can this be beneficial? Last few days ago, we were downtown, when the hurricane, and I appreciate our firemen going down there to help with Dorian, downtown Lynchburg, we're getting ice cream. And as we're getting ice cream, I saw some people, and one guy was wearing a wrestling shirt, and I started talking with him, and he said, no, we're from Pennsylvania. We were at Kill Devil's Hills, and because of the hurricane, we're now here staying with an Airbnb at somebody's house that has a pool. And we saw a news report that showed a people that had the problems with the hurricane, that we were welcoming, we were open arms, we said, come on, we got, even though our hotels may have been full, we had people that said, we'll rent out our house. And with that, I think we're going to look back on this and say, is this really something that we wanted to squash? Or is this something that we kind of really wanted to fan that flame, because of the fact that people's property, their own houses, what they do in their own house, renting it out, they care about their property, I think we talked about that last time, it's going to be beneficial with what our Commissioner of Revenue has said, if we just look at saying, hey, let's, and I think the Airbnb hosts have said, we agree, put lodging tax on it, get 84 grand without doing anything, without having to micromanage and go in after all of these things and trying to figure out who we're going to let grandfather, what property's going to be this, let's figure out a way that we can attract more people to come in Lynchburg, spend more money in their restaurants when our hotels are full, spend more money at our grocery stores and our sales tax, rather than really trying to squash it. And again, I look back at that time with those billboards. It was, I mean, a lot of people said, man, it's going to be a lot of bad things, but in hindsight, I think every councilmember who was here that voted for it recognized how great it was. It was totally the opposite of what was portrayed. I think the same thing is here. You know, we're going to look at this, and we're going to say, hey, we got to tighten up the belt because one neighborhood complained because of 11 complaints around a city of 50 square miles. Now, is that something we want to do and change it later? Maybe sometimes that has to happen, but I think we have something before us today that we could actually kind of look at and see what is going to be a better thing to make Lynchburg a better place to live, work, and play. Going over all these little nuances of these ordinance, I don't think it's going to be helpful for Lynchburg. The people that stayed here with the hurricane were delighted we didn't have, that we had options, and that they had options. Let's be a welcoming city, let's figure out how we can do this while we can protect neighborhoods just like we do with our other ordinances.
Thank you. Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you. I'm going to stick to the areas that I'm most familiar with, which would be Fort Hill, right around Lynchburg College, Winhurst, those are all, pretty much, I think most of that areas are too. So I've spent a lot of time walking around those streets, and you see, there's a lot of rental property in those neighborhoods. It seems to me that if we're, on one hand prohibiting or acquiring owner-occupied rental property, on the other hand, we're allowed owner-occupied rental property, it just doesn't, it's conflicting to me. And I was convinced, while I was in, gee, it was in the spring, I was in the Fort Hill area, and I met a fellow, and he was asking me about the short-term rental ordinance, and he made a very convincing point. He said, the problem in neighborhoods are long-term rentals, because there's no incentive for the owner to keep the property up, because they're, they can, they can rent the property for a year, and, or maybe it's a multi-year rent, lease, and, you know, they don't, they don't need to keep it up. But if somebody's on a short-term rental, there's a constant pressure for upkeep and making it look better. And he argued, and I believe him, that short-term rentals are better for the aesthetics of a neighborhood than long-term rentals, and that made, that made a lot of sense to me. I don't think we should burden this, I think it sends a conflicting message, because, you know, why should we require then that long-term rentals be owner-occupied, which is kind of ludicrous, nobody ever think about that, and long-term rentals are required, I mean, you can, you can do long-term rentals anywhere in the city, you can rent out your house. There's no prohibition on it. I don't think we should prohibit this. I voted against the RC and the R1. I certainly don't think we should tighten it even further and say R2. I'd rather, and I said this at the last meeting, I'd rather err on the side of liberty than restrict it too tightly. We can always come back and revisit if there's a problem. So I would, I would suggest, there's no motion on the table. There's a motion to reconsider, Mr. Irwin, maybe I need your help. There's a motion to reconsider, that just opened the topic back up, but, so now we're discussing it, but there's no actual motion on the table. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So, I mean, I'd be, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to reduce or to strike owner-occupancy requirements for all districts.
Second, Nick.
All right, there's been a motion to strike all owner occupancy. We will now cast the vote for that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Discuss that.
I'm sorry, is there any further discussion?
I think I've said what I need to do, it's about balance, it's about, it's about freedom.
And I will say something about the owner occupancy. I had another person say to me, and showed an older couple, that they're using this for their retirement money, it's not owner-occupied, it's a separate property, they rented their property for a long period of time, and it was terrible. It was over in the Winhurst area, or, excuse me, the Cornerstone area, right behind Cornerstone off the Lakeside Drive. They rented it long-term, they had trouble. They had trouble with the neighbors, they had trouble with trash, they had trouble with upkeep. They found that they could rent, instead of renting, having the place rented for an entire 30 days, every month, they got $800 for renting the place. They rented it for 10 days, two-thirds, two-thirds of the time, there's nobody there. Two-thirds of the time, the neighbors are delighted, because there's nobody next door having trash, having noise, having, and they got the same 800 bucks. And so with that, they realized, and they said the exact same thing that your friend did in Fort Hill, they said the fact that they'd much rather do the short-term renter, rental, because the property is much more well-maintained, they don't have problems with trash, they don't have problems with somebody coming from San Francisco or Skinny Atlas, New York, coming here and having a bunch of friends over. I mean, when you go to a hotel, you don't have parties at a hotel that you're typically, when you're visiting somewhere. So with this, they discovered it was much better, and the neighborhood loved it. They loved the short-term rentals as opposed to the long-term rentals. I said that, and it's in our minutes from last meeting, you know, when you, when you look at those items, I think having a requirement of owner occupancy really, really limits, and so I gladly support this motion.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to be a little bit redundant here, but I do want to make the point, I don't disagree with much of what Councilmember Helgason and Perrow said with regard to liberty, with regard to the benefits of short-term rentals. Councilmember Helgason is focused on why we should not prohibit short-term rentals in the city, but we're not prohibiting short-term rentals, we're just restricting how they are conducted in certain places where we will permit them, but with some greater limitations than in other places. And I do want to ask, is there still language in the ordinance that will allow the infrequent use by a short-term renter? I didn't see that in any of the documents that were submitted to us, but we talked about drawing a correlation between the occasional infrequent rental for a wedding or graduation, just like we do by not charging sales taxes for bake sales or yard sales and things that don't happen more than once or twice a year.
That's not in the current draft.
Was there a reason why staff decided not to allow that? Because, while you're coming up, that's consistent with, for example, what with the hurricane evacuation, somebody could open up their house for a short-term?
So when we, when council made the motion to do the collection agreement, at that point, it was really just kind of regulated through whether or not someone offered that provision or not. One of the things that you'll discuss in a few minutes is whether or not to have a registration requirement.
Right.
But as of now, the thought process was that you'd just collect lodging tax when someone came through, which kind of self-regulated that whole infrequent knee.
But that's different from the person that wants to rent out for one weekend during graduation, but really doesn't want to register and pay the registration fee. I know we'll get the lodging tax if they rent through an Airbnb or one of the other platforms that collected automatically and remitted to the city. I'm talking about the compulsion for them to register just for an occasional use.
So at our last meeting, we had, staff had not proposed a registration fee, we'd switched over and said if we did a voluntary collection agreement, we would do that, only council directed us to come back with what the registration fees were to cover staff costs, so we'll provide that, and if you want to provide an exemption in that, we can certainly discuss it, but I think as part of that, that would...
Well, that's not on this motion, but I would be in favor of, in the... Well, that's not on this motion, but I would be in favor of, in the proviso for the registration, that it be exempted for a certain lower threshold of uses, just like we do with other things. Okay. Here's where I'm somewhat redundant. We've got to acknowledge that we designate neighborhoods as residential RC, R1, and R2 for a reason. And my understanding through the decades has been that there are certain amenities and benefits that we want to prevail and exist in those residential neighborhoods. That is, we don't want to have 7-Eleven stores, and, sorry, I shouldn't use a commercial name, a commercial enterprise, and with the frequency of persons who are not residents of that neighborhood coming and going, the volume of traffic, who otherwise don't have any reason or investment in that neighborhood, coming and going in large volumes, the noise that is associated with persons who, higher volumes of people, and then, of course, the absence of tranquility and peace and quiet in areas where people want to be able to retreat and have, and be with their families. That's why we, as zoning ordinances have developed over the last century in this country, that's why we see the benefits of residential neighborhoods, having certain higher restrictions on what the owner can do to them. So to say we shouldn't restrict property for an owner's use of their property, we do it all the time, and there are good public purpose reasons for doing it. If you look at what short-term rentals are, they are commercial activities. If the person, if the owner doesn't live there, then that investment is to generate revenue, pure and simple. And who is that revenue going to come from? It's going to generally come not from residents of the city who go to transact business there. It's going to be a non-resident who has little or no investment, financial investment in Lynchburg, other than spending money and enjoy what we have, coming there. There is a frequency of non-residents coming there. There's a higher degree of traffic in that neighborhood, and it's on an ongoing and regular and repeated basis. Otherwise, it wouldn't be a commercial enterprise. So for those reasons, that's totally contrary to why we want to establish residential neighborhoods, because those are the things we want to limit in those neighborhoods. So that basic logic, logic is why I, and I don't see a differentiation between the size of an R2 lot and a size of an R1 lot as a basis to draw a distinction. So I think we are on good and solid ground to reasonably require owner occupancy, and I mean, principal owner. It's the principal residence of the owner in an R1, R2, and RC.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Higginson?
So granted, I understand zoning, and I understand we're not comparing a residential home with a 7-Eleven or a commercial enterprise or a pig farm or something. But if we compare R1 with R1, one, you rent it out for three-hundred-and-sixty days, which is a commercial enterprise, the person doesn't live there, they're renting the house, versus renting, you know, you had one document signed for one person, or you have three-hundred-and-sixty documents signed, three-hundred-and-sixty different people. So one, you rented it out for a year, three-hundred-and-sixty days, to one person. Another, you rented it out to three-hundred-and-sixty different people, one day a year. The end result is the same, that you rented your property. Now, I would agree, if we had a restriction that said, R1, for whatever reason the city deems necessary, that you cannot have a R1 house and you cannot rent it out. You must live there. If you did that, all else being equal, it would be the same, whether you rented it out as a long-term rental, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days to one person or to three-hundred-and-sixty-five different people. And so both of them are which, which we file your income tax return, and you're going to file unearned income, rental income, rental income, either which is the same. So if we're going to say commercial enterprise, okay, we got to be consistent. And if it's commercial enterprise as a rental, whether you rent it out for a week, a day, or a month, or a year, it's the same. I don't understand how that could anywhere remotely be different compared to like a 7-Eleven or something.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Councilman Higginson. That really, that's a good point. I would differentiate between designating a long-term rental as a commercial enterprise. I do not agree that it is a commercial enterprise. I think it is a revenue generating activity. It, no doubt, generates a revenue, but it doesn't have all the other elements that a commercial activity has. Volume of non-residents or persons from outside the neighborhood frequently coming in and leaving on a regular basis. With a rental, you have one group, entity, family, person, and they're there for a long period of time. And it, in all other respects, appears to be the same sort of activity as an owner who lives there. There's not the other elements. So yes, it's revenue generating, but it's not commercial. And I think that's a significant distinction.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson and Higginson. Vice Mayor Dolan.
Thank you very much. I agree a hundred percent with Councilmember Nelson. To me, it really boils down to three things. Maintaining the integrity of neighborhoods and not destroying the fabric of the neighborhoods, and the security of families knowing, who moved into a neighborhood to raise their children, have their families feel secure about letting their kids play outside and knowing who lives next door or down the street, and having a secure knowledge of that. I think that's a really important factor that we're missing.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a hard one. This is complicated. It's really, it's really challenging. I agree with Councilmember Nelson that it doesn't make sense to require owner occupancy in RC and R1 and not R2. I think if we're going to do it in two of them, we should do it in three of them, or not at all. And I've been, enjoying might not be the word, but I've been fascinated by the conversation we've been having. And I can appreciate why, to Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Dolan's point, that people are worried about transience in their neighborhoods. That's fundamentally, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's one of the big concerns is transience in neighborhoods, and that some folks view owner occupancy as a bulwark to mitigate the risk posed by transience. But as has been pointed out, we have long-term rentals in neighborhoods, and we really have no assurances when we move into a neighborhood who our neighbors are going to be, how they're going to use their property. They may rent it out long-term. They may leave it to go to seed. I mean, they could do nothing with that property. And I think there are other risks to neighborhoods that are probably greater, far greater than short-term rentals, especially because, you know, if you take a platform like Airbnb, there is a, you know, not only does the operator have an incentive, a big incentive, to keep the property well-maintained if they want further business, but it's the occupant, the person renting the property, also has a big incentive, because they too are getting reviewed. And if they don't behave appropriately, then Airbnb, they might get a negative review, and then ultimately, they might lose privileges on that platform. I'm not saying that you can't get bad apples on Airbnb. Certainly, that does happen. But I think it's not, in my experience, it hasn't been a likely scenario. And certainly, after talking with operators in town, that is not, their big concern right now is council. It's not the people who might be staying at their properties. So this is, this might be a rare point of agreement, Councilmember Higginson. Wow, we should, there should be balloons or confetti or something. So, you know, I think that right now, our touch should remain as light as possible when it comes to short-term rentals. I don't think we should over-regulate. And until and if we see real problems emerge for neighborhoods where folks are saying, this actually is a big problem, I think then, you know, if, then we can actually, we would have data points, we will be able to identify what the real challenges are. And then I think regulation would be appropriate. But right now, this seems, I think it's, I'm glad we're having this proactive conversation, but I worry that it might be, it might be too much too soon before we really know what the effect might be. So I would be in favor, surprised to hear myself say this, for the motion.
Councilmember Wilder?
Based on the emails I've received and also conversations with certain residents, I've received comments on both sides. Some complaining about Airbnb, that they're short-term persons, they don't know who they are, they're coming in, they got parking spaces, nature. And then the other argument is that, as you mentioned, Councilman Higginson, is that they're, they try to keep the property more upkeep. They can rent it for a shorter period of time and make the same amount of money. So I'm getting, again, from the emails I've received, from both arguments, I do understand what Councilmember Wright, as far as that over-regulating. So I can, again, I'm kind of a little torn, but I can go either way. But again, I've received comments from both sides. And again, and I agree also with Councilman Dolan, the main thing about your neighborhood, you want to make sure you know who's in your neighborhood, and you want to feel safe. Biggest problem we have in our neighborhood is not a lot of parking, and you get people coming in, and some of my neighbors have complained about just all the extra cars. I'm a person who had an Airbnb down the street, and they were taking up some of the parking space. They didn't know who they were. So again, I've gotten arguments. But then right on the, also in Washington, you have several rental properties, and some of the large houses. So again, they have really complained about those. I've heard more so about the Airbnbs. But again, for my neighborhood, I get it from both sides.
If I could, then I'll, I wanted to have the discussion, because to me, it's an equity issue. It's an equity issue between neighborhoods. It says that people who have larger lots can have the better quality of life, the impact of lower volume, the comings and goings, and folks who don't, won't. My thing is, this is the latest, greatest, commercial revenue generating opportunity in our social society. Are we going to have the conversation on long-term renting as well? Because I say, I had a conversation with a homeowner who was trying to sell a property in a neighborhood that long-term renters and the properties that are not being kept up, the properties that the trash is growing and all of the other things, their sale of their property is being affected by the long-term properties around them. So I understand the argument, but my thing is to only have the conversation on the side of Airbnb, because it's the latest and greatest commercial social economy right now, and not think about the long-term ownership as well. Because if we're going to hold one set accountable, we need to hold others accountable. But for right now, I'm just interjecting that conversation as well, because long-term renters and the problem that landlords are not keeping up their property is an issue in our community. It's an issue particularly in some R2 communities. And so we're having a lot of conversation around the economic, commercial generating topic right now. But when are we going to have the long-term conversation as well, which is coming out in this debate right now, which I think is very valid, because we do have some responsible homeowners that have been landlords, that are looking to turn over their properties, whether to Airbnb, whether to a new homeowner, whether to a landlord that wants to rent. But they are, their sales are being affected, because we're not having the conversation about long-term rentals in the same blocks in some of these neighborhoods that we're talking about. So I think that's a conversation. It might be separate for today, but again, it's coming into this debate. For me, it's about equity across. It's about, if we're going to say that it has to be owner occupied in one, I say it has to be owner occupied in all. And that's the great thing about discussion and council and democracy. We can bring it back, just like the billboards. So if in the future, we see that it is not growing as much as we thought, or that there is compliance, and that, you know, we are locking in some folks who really want to do the right thing and expand, then they can come back. But I think for right now, we owe it to the people who did buy into a quality of life, who did buy into allowing their children to play, who did buy into their neighbors. We owe them equity across the city. That's where I wanted to open up the discussion, once I heard it from Mr. Martin. And so I would ask Councilmember Higginson to hear you, and then we call for the vote. If there's not a lot of discussion, Councilmember Perrow has more?
I don't want to speak again.
Okay. All right. Please.
I guess with that, you know, a lot of the things, as Councilmember Wright pointed out, it's, a lot of it is theoretical. It's saying, oh, look at how bad this could be. Again, that's why I brought up the billboards. It was the exact same thing. It was how bad those billboards could be. The reality of it was, wow, this is actually very good. And so when we look at the fact of these Airbnbs, as Councilmember Wright said, there is a lot of imposition that is in there on both sides of the transaction. The property owner, who's going on an Airbnb platform, if they don't do well, they're not going to be able to rent it out anymore. If they didn't advertise accurately, they're not going to be able to rent it out anymore. The renter, if they do a bad job, they're not going to be able to rent anymore. It polices itself because of the fact that the, everybody cares about themselves, and they care about their property. They want to make sure that they got a good renter, because they don't want to get their property destroyed. And so with that, that whole platform really helps. You know, we have lots of other things with regarding, I know we're going to be talking about a little bit later, but, you know, all these different violations. If somebody doesn't mow their grass and all this stuff. So when we're looking at how we can really improve and build wealth in the community, how we can help, I think the example was excellent over in Daniels Hill. A house that was twenty-two thousand bucks, had fourteen complaints on one house. Tall grass, peeling paint, gutters falling down, trash, noise. A person bought it, fixed it up as an Airbnb, zero complaints. Value went from twenty-two thousand to two-hundred-and-nineteen, two-hundred-and-thirty-some thousand bucks. That is how we build wealth in the community, by people allowing them to do what they want to do, and making sure that they use the current technology to help. They have a great thing for the neighborhood. The neighbors love them. They don't hate them. It's not this boogeyman that we're assuming. You know, a lot of the stuff I'm hearing is the boogeyman hiding under the bed. I think that was fictitious. So some of this, we got to really pull out what is fictitious versus what is factual. If we had lots of complaints, maybe that's something we need to go down a path. But when we have eleven complaints over fifty square miles with twenty-five thousand units, I think what Councilmember Wright has suggested is if we're not, if we don't have it for any, if we have trouble later, we can always bring it back in. But to require owner occupancy that add back later, or require it now, then take it away, I think we're just, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by allowing that growth to happen. And so I'm all in favor of removing the restriction for the owner occupancy, because as you said, Madam Mayor, I mean, if what's good for the goose has got to be good for the gander. And if we're renting it out where it's not owner occupied as a long-term rental, I don't see how you can say it has to be owner occupied when you're renting it out for a day.
Councilmember Perrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I enjoyed very much listening to the debate on this. This is obviously a split issue. I don't think there are any politics on this one. It's just really how you feel about the issue. I, of course, am very concerned about the neighborhoods and the integrity of our neighborhoods. And I've certainly taken that into consideration. I want to bring up a couple more points to this motion. I thought that Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Wright both hit on, I think, a really salient point. When Councilmember Nelson was talking about the exceptions, and if somebody just wanted to rent out to support hurricane, people trying to get away from the hurricane, or for, you know, say liberties in a major playoff game and wanted to do something like that. And then how we write that into the ordinance, that's going to be terribly complicated. So I think we ought to begin with something very simple. I don't think Mr. Wright said complicated specifically also. Let's keep it simple and really keep it open and flexible. And if we have problems, then we can react and tighten it up over time. Instead of trying to anticipate what all the problems are, let's, I think this is a better time for us to sit back and look for the problems and then make adjustments as needed. So, one, it simplifies the document. Madam Mayor, your comment on equity could easily be made in support of the motion that I did, because it's treating everybody the same way. And, you know, it's allowing anybody the freedom to choose to rent on a short-term basis. They already have it on a long-term basis, but it's just making it all the same and being consistent. I think consistency is important. And then we talk about RC is some, you know, highly, excuse me, nobody's actually said this, but the way I've inferred the conversation is that RC is some highly cherished and protected area that is maybe more restrictive than R1. But to me, RC is actually the optimum place for short-term rentals. It's a minimum ten-acre lot. I mean, if you want short-term rentals anyway, I'd say you want there. I mean, it, I mean, if you want short-term rentals anyway, I'd say you want them, because they can't bother anybody, and they're probably going to rent out a house that's overlooking a creek, that's a beautiful spot. So I'm not even sure why RC is in there. Resource conservation is to protect the resources that it provides, that steep slopes, waterways, and other areas that, that have a natural resource value. That's also highly appealing to people that just maybe want to get away. Say, somebody wants, somebody wants to go write poetry for the week. I, I don't know, I would certainly opt to go to a place that's a resource conservation. Ideally for me, if we're doing the short-term ordinance and working forward, then I would, I would approve the, the Airbnb revenue idea, and just let it go with that. And then see what happens, and then we can respond as needed. I know there have been some problems in Beak, in the Beacon Hill area. I've heard a couple of isolated concerns, but the majority of the concerns I've heard about is, leave us alone, we're doing, it's completely unregulated now. You know, let it, let it go. When we see the problems, we can tighten it up. So that's the final thing I'll say there.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
The, thank you, Madam Mayor. The last two comments, very good comments that prompted two thoughts. One is, if we take the approach that we're going to adopt a hands-off attitude, and not impose higher restrictions, and if there are problems, then we'll come back and we'll impose higher restrictions, that is going to inevitably mean that everybody who's doing it now will be grandfathered in, and those restrictions will not apply to anyone who would undertake an Airbnb. And I think that's a greater problem than to say, put the restrictions on, and then we can take them off. Nobody can complain about them being relaxed, but they certainly can complain about them being imposed, if we, if we don't have them at an earlier stage. And the second thing is that with regard to the infrequent use, I think that really only goes to whether they register. And the provision would be, if a person uses their property as an Airbnb for less than, let's say, 10 days a year, then the city is not going to pursue any enforcement against them, because they don't need to register at all. And if anything is collected from the Airbnb platform, that will be paid to the city, but it's not going to be because they registered, it's going to be because the platform collected it. So that's a fairly easy solution to the, to the low-level infrequent use. Those are the only two thoughts I had.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Anyone else I hear, see Councilmember Hagelson?
I guess just one other point on that, is, is the fact of, of notice. So one, if we're, you, you had mentioned about grandfathering and whatnot, you know, one thing that is troubling, if we were to go the opposite way of this, by adding the R2, would be the fact that nobody in R2 ever saw this coming. And so now we're going to change by fiat, something that says, we're going to take this away from you. So going the other direction would be the worst thing that we could do, because there would be no advertisement, there would be no telling anybody who owns a property in R2, that we're now all of a sudden going to take away the right that you had in your property yesterday, tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll just remove all of these, but we won't go, go further restricting.
Thank you, Councilmember Hagelson. To that point, Mr. White, can you come up and, and clarify for us, would it be that point right there that Mr. Hagelson just made?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin.
No problem. It was advertised as owner occupancy in RC, R1, R2 originally. So I do want, I do want to clarify, when we advertised it, it was...
We removed that, so that's perfectly gone, it's been in the, you know, so...
I, I just wanted to clarify that when it was advertised, it is...
Right, I would think that anyone who's, who's operating one is watching the conversation, regardless. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Hagelson, so I, I get that point. Mr. Martin, do you have anything else you would like to, because I, I would ask, if we have no further discussion after Mr. Martin speaks, that we call for the vote on Councilmember Perro's motion?
I would just reiterate what Mr. White said. When this was originally advertised, it was the RC, R1, and R2. Your last meeting was not a public hearing, so if council chooses to change it today, it's being done some, based on council's discussion, and not input from anyone. So I do have one other thing to say, but I'll let you cast your vote first.
All right. Councilmember Perro, can you go ahead and restate your vote, your motion just for the vote?
The motion was to remove occupancy restrictions from all zoning classifications.
All right, thank you. If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. Correct? Okay, so the motion passes to remove all restrictions. I mean, owner occupancy, okay. All right. So where does that leave us with the next piece of conversation?
Well, first, I would like to say respectfully, I would hope that when staff comes to council asking for clarification, it's not seen as duping you. Obviously, there was a lot of discussion tonight around the issue, we wanted to make sure you understood it, and that's exactly what it was, just to make sure that council understood what you were voting on.
Thank you. And I just want to say after the vote, that I would think if we're loosening all of the restrictions on this, that we would bring the long-term rental back, and, for a discussion on the issues that are occurring with long-term rentals in our neighborhoods as well.
So with that, if you have removed all the owner occupancy requirements, there is really no reason to have a grandfathering clause in the ordinance. So we can skip that section. So the, at the August 13th work session, council requested options on the number of occupants in short-term rental. We laid out three options in the ordinance for you to consider, the first being not to allow more than four unrelated individuals in the short-term rental, where two or more related people occupy the short-term rental, one unrelated person could be there. This is the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission chose this option specifically to allow two couples to occupy a short-term rental together. The second option is the current ordinance requirement for occupancy anywhere in the city, and that's not more than three unrelated individuals in a dwelling unit, the same language, if two or more related people are in the unit, not more than one additional unrelated person may occupy. This is by far the most equitable, in that it's the long-term rental requirements also, has been in place since at least the early 90s, if not the late 80s. This has been the occupancy standard in the city. The third option, which is what we're requiring, calling the bed and breakfast provision, this is where the occupancy is based on district and the number of bedrooms. RC, R1, and R2 districts would allow up to three rooms, with no more than two people per room, or a total of six. And in all other districts, a maximum number of rooms of five, if not more than four persons per room, for a total of 20. This provision could be problematic for many reasons, most notably, since you are not requiring any parking for short-term rentals. If you go up this high, there may be parking issues at these short-term rentals, and staff would have no way to address that. The other, if you chose this option, the need for conditional use permit for bed and breakfasts, which is mainly because of the larger occupancies, would just need to go away. So staff is fine with the, what was recommended to you by the Planning Commission, which is no more than four.
Thank you. Any discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are a couple of things, and I'm looking at the draft of the ordinance, or that portion of the ordinance that you shared with council. The first being in paragraph G1 and G2, the reference is to host, H-O-S-T, and that's used in both paragraph one and two. Throughout the ordinance, other terms such as owner, representative, managing representative, are also used. What is a host? Is a host the owner? Is the host the managing representative, or are they synonymous or not?
I think the host could be the owner or the managing person actually listing it.
Okay.
Because obviously, these aren't going to be owner...
Can we get rid of the term host and put owner in there? Because the key there is the notice.
Okay, yeah.
And, and so we have consistency throughout the ordinance in that not having to try to figure out a definition for each one. If they're the same, then let's just use the same term.
So you want to use owner in lieu of host throughout the document?
I think that would be less confusing, just a matter of wordsmithing.
Where are you reading that?
Under paragraph G, in the actual ordinance that preceded this summary of the presentation. It's on our...
Are there things I'm looking at that has the violations?
Yes. G1, you see in the second line, toward the end of that line, host describing, give written notice to the host describing the violations. I think the, the owner's the one who should be getting the notice, and I don't know who the host is.
Well, I think the host could be the, like, for example, just like a, a long-term renter, sometimes they'll use a rental agency, or a company. So somebody could be the host, that doesn't actually, not the property owner, but they're the one that actually puts it on Airbnb, they're the one who actually navigates, and kind of like your, your landlord. Is that what you're talking about?
Don't we want the owner to know, because it's their property that's going to be violated?
Well, if they, for example, obviously, you understand as an attorney, when you represent somebody, they contact you as the representative, so you have the agency, that the agent can speak for the, the owner. I mean, so I, I think that, that language actually probably gives it a little broader, where the host can be notified, if the host is the one who's doing the transacting, that's acting as the agent on behalf of the owner of the, of the property. But if you send the property, if somebody transacted and contracted an, an agency to host, and they live here, and the property owner's in California, and they send the notice to somebody in California, it's not going to have the, the benefit that you wanted if you notified the host. So just...
I think you're both right. It may be difficult for us to know who the actual host is, but we will definitely have the ownership records.
The person who fills out the application and registers it can designate who the owner is. And if they want to delegate that to someone else, then the owner's being notified by, as you say, the representative, registered agent being notified. But the owner is the one who is in jeopardy here, and I think they are the ones who the notice needs to be directed to in one way or the other.
So you're talking about the notice, so what about the actual, the, the occupancy of how many people can be there? Is that what we're...
We haven't gotten to that yet.
I thought that's what he...
That's what we were discussing.
I thought that's what we were discussing.
It's fine to go to that, but the last slides were on the number of occupants.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm not getting to the options yet, whether it's one, two, or three. I'm, I'm talking about something that's more fundamental than that.
Okay.
Who is the aggrieved party, if there's a violation, or the benefited party. The second point I have is, paragraph H, right below G, it talks about non-transferability of the grandfather status.
There'll be no need to grandfather, because you struck the owner occupancy. So that whole paragraph will go away.
So we're not going to worry about new owner, because I don't know what a new owner is?
No, you've, then entire city is...
And then with regard to the, of the three options, I'm in favor of option one. Option three, the detriments to that have already been mentioned, and if we follow that approach, then in R1, RC, or any of the residential districts, only six persons could theoretically occupy that, and that might not be even enough for a single family. And the R2, option two, only three people could use it if they're not related. And that would mean that two couples, if they're not related, couldn't use that. So option one seems to me the most flexible, and that could allow as many related persons as possible, as long as it complies with the underlying zoning requirements for the district. But it only limits unrelated persons to two couples. If they're, if they're all unrelated, then at least four people could stay there.
That's correct, yes.
So of the three, option one is more favorable to me.
I guess, I guess one thing, as we look at these, we're assuming, we're, we're having to make a lot of assumptions, and as Councilmember Perro said before, that it's really difficult to think of every possible nuance, and now create language for it. So I appreciate the, the difficulty in that. But what this does now is makes a lot of assumptions that are totally not true. It makes assumptions of how many rooms are in a house, you know, that, it treats them equally. So if you've got a 1,200-square-foot bungalow versus a 10,000-square-foot estate, it treats them the same, because by definition, we have to do that. So I don't know how we really go about saying that we're going to define something, and I think last time, we did talk about the fact of, i- i- if I'm going to rent out my house for $77 a day, I'm going to make sure that these people are going to be good, that they're not bringing a family of 10, that they're going to destroy the house, because it's my property. And, and so when we kind of get into a lot of these different nuances, I'm really wondering how we can actually make a cookie-cutter approach proactively or prospectively, that says, this is going to work whether you're a 1,200-square-foot apartment, or whether you're a 12,000-square-foot farm on a, on a AC. You know, with this, putting those words in there is very difficult, and actually coming up with the exact number. And so as Councilmember Perro said, if we don't know, maybe if we err on the side of the freedom, because of the fact that I'm not going to let somebody in my house with 12 kids to rent out a room for 77 bucks, and the free market can decide, and say, look at, we're not going to do that. Now, if there's a problem with noise, we have ordinances that deal with noise, whether you're renting a property, short-term, whether you're renting a property, long-term, where you buy a house, or whether you're in a business. Lots of those things are already covered under other laws. And, and the other point is, I really don't know how you, you know, with our, our zoning ordinance that has the maximum number of unrelated people, the difficulty is, is saying, what if somebody brings over a guest for the night? So I don't know how you can prospectively come up with language that satisfies that, you know? And by the time somebody complains, by the time the zoning administrator comes, those people have left, because it was a short-term rental, so...
Any response, any further discussion regarding this? Any thoughts as to which? Councilmember Perro?
I think that the last meeting asked about how, how vacation communities handled this.
It's all over. I think we looked at the mean, median, and mode, and it's... So of the 27 localities, 17 have ordinances, 15 of those limit the occupancy, average of, mean of seven, median of six, and the mode of six, so six to seven.
Well, I was thinking vacation locate, places where people go to rent for short-term, before they're called short-term, I guess they've probably always been called short-term rentals, but, you know, I went to the beach this year, went for my week, and, you know, it's a, there's seven bedrooms, two people in a bedroom, but the, the, there's got to be an ordinance in these communities, like, you know Hilton Head's got to have something, Kew, I've been going on the beach in South Carolina, so these are the only places, no, Kitty Hawk probably has an ordinance about, about number of people. I'm just kind of curious, because this is really vacation visitors primarily, I would imagine, or, or people escaping natural disasters. So I'd be curious as to the way that is. But something that I think is really interesting, and Councilmember Hagelson will remember this, and I think Councilmember Nelson will, but we used to get, like, multiple bread and breakfast, you know, CUPs a year, and now they're gone. You know, I haven't seen one in, in probably 10 years. But we used to get, but, and it's a, so what's a, what's a bed and breakfast? It's a B and B, Airbnb, it's taken over the business. People aren't doing bed and breakfasts anymore, they're doing Airbnbs, and hey, they offer breakfast to you as part of the deal. I think it broadens the point, and, and Mr. Martin, I think you're exactly right, if we change it to meet the, if we use option three, then why do we have a CUP for bed and breakfasts, traditional bed and breakfasts? And I think, I think that's a great point. I don't... I don't, I don't know. I'm going back to the only time that I've, my broad experience at Airbnb, when my buddy got it, and not me, but we went on a golf trip. Four guys, four rooms, you know, and four unrelated people. I think of four unrelated people as a minimum because you're going to have, just as somebody else, Mr. Nelson said, you're going to have couples going on trips. I think, who's going to use Airbnbs? I'd love to have some examples. I don't know if you all have any examples. What is, are they football games for Liberty? Are they Commonwealth games? What's driving this? Do you all know? We, I guess, once, well, that's another idea. We can respond to data when we see it. If we, once we make an agreement, hopefully with Airbnb, we'll be able to see when the volumes are. We can correlate the volumes to the, to what's happening during that period of time. Maybe it's when the leaves change in the fall. But that would give us some more information as to why people are coming into town. And then that could help inform us a little bit better about what the occupancy limit should be. And so again, I'm airing to the side to be a little bit more relaxed. I can be convinced for option number one. I'd prefer option number three because it's consistent with the Airbnbs, except as Mr. Martin pointed out, it's a CUP process. So why do we even have a CUP for that? And I think that's, you're spot on.
I would be very, I would advise council to think about that seriously because if you do that, if you open up, Walter, you can help me with this, but it was prior to the early 90s that the city actually allowed more than three unrelated people. And they changed it, a previous council changed that because of college students in residences. Still.
College, Lynch, University of Lynchburg specifically.
Well, they were the larger school at the, at the time. But now it would obviously be Liberty. You know, if you change this and go to six in a short-term rental, you know, and then 20 in all other districts. While there is, while there was 11 complaints that was referenced for short-term rentals, the number one complaint that the zoning administrator receives is still the number of occupants. So I would ask you to please be very hesitant about increasing it much beyond the four.
Got it. Thank you.
Especially with no parking provisions or.
Which we can require through a CUP process.
You do, and that's the reason for this CUP process. Plus, the neighborhood gets a chance to come and speak to you about it.
Yes, sir.
Where in this they would not.
Okay.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan, followed by Councilmember Wright. Thank you, Councilmember Perro.
Thank you. And I can, I can justify option one and not going to, like, we're not a beach destination. We're not a golf destination. We're not, we're not a Hilton Head. We're not a Nermal Isle. And we don't want to be that. So I think that that gives us some protection.
Councilmember Wright?
I agree with what Vice Mayor Dolan just said and would make the motion that we approve option one.
Thank you. The motion has been made. A second, I'll turn to Councilmember Wright for further discussion or thought.
I think, I think it's been amply covered. I'm loathe to lift that restriction right now.
Councilmember Nelson?
I think I commented on it the first time around, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hugelson?
Thank you. The, you know, when we look at the lodging tax, the lodging tax is a percentage, right, Mr. Knuckles? It's, huh?
Six and a half.
Six and a half percent of assessed value of the property? Six and a half percent of, how many people are there? Or six and a half percent of what?
Room night stay.
So the room night stay. So now if we have this seven-bedroom house, as Councilmember Perro stated, and you can only rent it to four people, are we going to rent it for a seven-bedroom price to get more lodging tax revenue since it's a function of what the price is? Normally, when you rent something that is big, you pay probably more for it. If somebody's paying more for it, we're going to get more lodging tax revenue because it's six and a half percent of the price. So now if we're going to artificially say that you've got a seven-bedroom house that you're renting out, but you can only rent it out to four people, you're restricting how much revenue we as a city can get. I don't think that's what we want to be doing. I think we want to try to maximize the revenue that we're getting from outsiders that are coming to Lynchburg. That's why we have a tourism department. That's why we spend a lot of money promoting that. So if we have this tied to just some artificial number that has no basis of relationship to the square footage, the bedrooms, the 10 acres of land, all this stuff, we're going to be shortchanging ourself. So I don't think option one is a good one because it's a cookie-cutter that assumes the same 1,200-square-foot. You can have maximum of four people. And a 10,000-square-foot mansion, you can only have four people. So having enough flexibility for the owner of the property to raise that price because they're now getting it because they're saying, hey, we have a seven-bedroom apartment or seven-bedroom house. You can have seven people or you can have 12 people at the beach. Well, we're going to be getting more revenue. And so I don't think this is wise for us to artificially shortchange the revenue that we can get to the city from people that don't live in the city. So I'll be voting against this. And I would suggest that we maybe change the frame of the discussion to kind of broaden this somewhat.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion prior to taking the vote? I'm sorry, Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would point out that, well, I do agree that this is, to some degree, a cookie-cutter. We're taking a formula and applying it to any dwelling across the entire city. And it may be very appropriate in some places and not as appropriate in other places. But we're not in a position to, I don't think I'm in a position to try to come up with a formula that is geared to the square footage and all of the nuances of all of the dwellings that may come into play in Lynchburg. I think we have to have a standard, and we'd do the best with that. But I'd point out, this is not just four persons in a seven-room house. It's four unrelated persons. You could have 20 people if they're all related in that seven-room house. So this gives some flexibility. And that seven-room house is the kind of house that we would probably think is most appropriate for a family to rent and come here for a wedding or a graduation or something like that. And it's going to be those big old houses that were built in a different age and era for single families that may be appropriate for this type of option or one of the larger houses that have been springing up over the last several decades in some of the more suburban areas of the city that would be appropriate for a large number. But it's not just for unrelated persons that are permitted by this option.
Councilmember Perro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I think that this provision is going to be largely ignored, just like it is across the city. But what it does do is it gives the zoning department something that they can enforce, that they need, if there's a problem, that they need to enforce. I guarantee you, there are more than three unrelated people living in multiple, multiple places. My, my problem is, I don't, you know, option three or something similar to it, I think that would take a lot of work to get that done. I just don't have a better option to present or a better alternative. So I'm going to rely on the work that the Planning Commission did and trust that they researched this. And if we have too many problems with four or if it's too restrictive, then I'll certainly be open to making it less restrictive. Or if it, or if it creates problems, if it has to be more restrictive, I'd be open to that also. But I'm going to just settle for the motion as it stands.
Thank you. And Councilmember Hugelson?
Just wish you brought up a new point, which was being related. So that brings up a whole different twist and a whole different line of thought and questioning. Yeah, I've done some, those of you who've done ancestry.com, you do lots of genealogy research, and it's kind of neat what you can find out. So related, you know, it kind of is going to depend on how far back you want to go to prove that you're related. We can go back to those like me that believe that Adam and Eve, you know, we are related. So I don't know how we're going to be able to enforce some type of item that says you've got to have your birth certificate, you've got to have your, you know, DNA testing, you have to have, you know, some marriage license or something. I think that, that seems kind of strange to figure out how you would actually enforce it. And so having laws that are enforceable and clear, fine with those. Ones that are not, I don't know if we, we put them out there just so we can say we have something for the isolated case that we can use it to be heavy-handed on somebody if we wanted to. I don't think that's appropriate. So having the ability to enforce this, I don't know how you would do it. You know, you can show up and say, we're all related. Okay? Great.
Thank you. Oh, I was about to say, if there's no further discussion.
Thank you. Just one thing to come from Councilmember Hugelson is, since we only had, what, 11 violations altogether, I don't think it's going to be a big problem.
All right.
And that's why I don't, I really don't like to see us putting in laws for something that, because of that. And that's why I'd really like us to think of these unintended consequences. Let's say we're open for business. Let's try to help people improve neighborhoods like over in Daniels Hill. I would love to see that.
I think the problem you're going to have is people are going to find a way to do long-term rentals and classify them as short-term. And that's going to create a very big issue. But that's something we'll have to deal with if it comes, and I hope it does not.
Long-term?
They're going to try and find a way to make long-term rentals for, say, college students into a short-term kind of contract to get the more additional people in the unit.
So with that, assuming we implement the, what was recommended is utilizing a sales tax, you know, lodging tax revenue, right now, there is zero when somebody's renting to a person for a long-term. So now you would take something that had zero long-term, or lodging tax revenue, and now get lodging tax revenue to the city. And so.
That's correct. That's a very good point. But nothing dictates how much I have to charge per night. All right, just to get the extra person. But we'll, we'll go forward and see how it works out.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wright, if you could state your motion again?
My motion is to approve occupancy option number one.
All right, thank you. That motion has been made. Discussion has been had. Please cast your vote. And the motion passes six to one. Thank you very much. And I will remind council, we do have another discussion regarding the Department of Social Services dashboard. So if we can make this a little more expedient, not to cut anyone off, but just to make sure that we're going to get through to number, well, two, number two and three. Thank you. I had written over that second one. I'm very sorry about that, yeah.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Member of Council, I have somewhat the easy part here, the registration.
I would not say anything's easy.
I concur.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't say short.
I would not say anything's easy.
The registration fee option, the one thing, I really appreciate the diligence council has given to this matter. I also appreciate the diligence from city staff. It's been a difficult topic, and you can understand everyone's perspective if you just put yourself in their shoes. And it is, it's a very difficult option. To the point about the vacation rentals, most of those are done by management companies, such as Virginia Beach, and we have it right here at Smith Mountain Lake. And those individuals or those companies were already collecting and remitting the lodging tax. That's why it was of extreme importance in those localities because you already had members, the business sector, that were already collecting and remitting, and they wanted to ensure everybody else was doing the same. And that's a lot of, the registry piece, the biggest part of that is if we go ahead and sign the agreement with Airbnb, which I think we want to do, then those individuals, they're actually, Airbnb is going to collect and remit. And what we're left with are the other operations that are operating under different platforms that this is what the registry is really there to support, is to ensure we have fairness and equity among all these rental units that are out there. And the three options, I mean, it's fairly simple. If it's a $150 fee, and again, we're using a 63% collection rate, which is the percentage that's given to us by the third party. And that would be $45,000 in revenue with $51,000 in cost. And of course, the $100 fee and the $50 fee, you have $30,000 in revenue or $15,000 in revenue. And another point, this is the first month that Airbnb has remitted the sales tax to the Department of Taxation. Now, taking that number and using the $77 as an average expense per night, which is, again, given to us by a third party. If you utilize that, it was, it was almost 3,600 rooms through Airbnb alone for the month of July.
In Lynchburg?
In Lynchburg, in the city. And it, it's anywhere between, for the city, if we sign the agreement, it's going to be in a neighborhood of 21 for the month of July. $21,000 to $22,000 the city would receive from Airbnb for the month of July. And that's the only month I have because that's the only month that's been reported to the department.
July.
July is when they began remitting the money.
And July was the state games.
Well, it was really, that was really August.
Oh.
The games were the first week of August.
August, right.
The majority.
So with this, I, you know, what was presented to us the first time, which I thought was a great solution. I mean, rather than having the fee, it was saying, we will all sign on and agree to the fact of doing the lodging tax. So when you have the lodging tax, the work, I think, as you had pointed it out, was simply depositing the check. Here, with a registration fee, we're now going to say, we've got to send somebody a bill. We've got to find them. We've got to do all this registration, pay the fee, when it would be so much better if they could, if we said, skip the fee. Let's collect this $21,000 a month, which is going to be a whole lot more than what is needed and collected by a fee. We then don't have to worry about who we're going to exempt because of the fact that if somebody does this, they rent out their property, as Councilmember Nelson said, very de minimis, short-term, so they do it twice. Well, 77 bucks, that took 100% of their money, their gross revenue, just to simply pay the fee. So if we had zero fee and we collected the lodging tax at 20-some-thousand a month, I think that's a much better way to go. We just remembered that we got rid of a fee that was very small, the business license, because of the fact that it's too hard to do, to collect. Why are we going to put a fixed cost on somebody when it's something that is beneficial to the community? It's beneficial to the city. It drives our tax revenue. Let's not, you know, put a damper on this. And I recognize the discussion last time, we first said, okay, let's go with the lodging tax revenue. But then it came back and said, well, let's add this too. Well, let's, let's not get greedy. Let's actually recognize the fact of, we want people to come to the city. We want them to also do other things. And if we sign this agreement with the Airbnb and get the lodging tax, 20-some-thousand bucks a month, I mean, that's be fabulous. And so that's be much more than cover any extra cost because there's going to be a cost associated with this registration, isn't there?
Correct.
I mean, there's going to be $51,000 a city cost that we wouldn't have to spend. I mean, I'm sure you're spending something by signing the back of the check and depositing it every month, but that probably is not 51,000. There's lots that you wouldn't have to keep up with. You don't have to send statements. You don't have to worry about collecting. You just get that 21,000 a month deposited in the bank for the city lodging tax. To me, that looks like a very, very good option. I don't think we should do both. You know, as, as we're coming into this, I think you mentioned, or somebody mentioned last time, that there was an estimate, Alexander, when they did it, 100,000 that they thought they were going to get in revenue. And so they're all worried, and oh, this is going to be bad. They estimated 100,000, they got 350, is that what you said?
That's correct.
350,000. So let's not, let's let this thrive. Let's let as many people do this as possible because you don't want to, for somebody to say, wow, I'm not going to pay a $150 fee, and so therefore, I'm not going to register on Airbnb. I'm going to just do it separately. I'm going to do it via VBRO or whatever. There's be thousands of. be thousands of, not thousands, but there'll be many other sites that come up that somebody could say, I'm going to go to that. Let's make it easy for our citizens to not be, become criminals unbeknownst to themselves. Have them sign up if they're already with Airbnb, they're already remitting the tax, they don't have to pay some kind of extra fee. And then it weeds itself out by not having, if somebody does it twice, they're not going to be taking 100% of their earnings and paying it to the city. So I think if we really nix that fee, I'd be in favor, which is crazy, of voting for adding the lodging tax on the Airbnb, provided we nix this fee. And I'll make that as a motion.
Say that again.
The motion is to add the lodging tax on Airbnb without adding the extra fee.
No registration.
No registration fee.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made. A second, do either of you have further conversation? I know Vice Mayor Dolan had something to say, so I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to...
Nothing to add. I think that makes a lot of sense to me. If you look at the fee and what the revenue is generating, it's not even covering the cost. So why are we doing it? I mean, it's just going to be, it'll be a loss leader. Now, if we were talking about upping the fee to 250, I think that's a bit excessive. It just doesn't make sense either. So let's just do away with the fee. I do realize that there's going to be an opportunity to loss, because I'm sure there could be more revenue collected from a registered, a registered group if you, but it's going to take a lot of work. It's going to take a whole lot of work trying to enforce somebody that rents their house out five towns a year on vacation rentals by owner and making sure that they pay their lodging tax. I, you know, I second this because I don't think that the revenue is worth the effort. I guess my question, though, is are we going to still pay the $13,000 a year for something?
It depends if we have the registry. Because, see, one of the purposes of the registry was occupancy. That was the primary purpose, was the occupancy requirement. And I don't know if Kent wants to address that, or how y'all want to look at that.
Yeah.
So the way the state code enables this, if you have a registry, you don't have to put a fee on it, but if you have a registration program that allows you to enforce the three-strikes rule that you moved forward at our last discussion. So that's the reason to have the registry. We would need the third party to identify the location, both through this registry and for Mr. Knuckles to be able to follow up on those who don't host through Airbnb.
All right. So my position stands, and just, you know, let's, if it's not a problem, let's not spend the money and take the effort to do it. And I know your staff's already stressed as it is, and, you know, if it becomes a problem later on, and we need to, we need to enforce the three-strikes rule, then we can implement this later. There could be a registration fee or requirement later on.
And even if it is $13,000, or collecting 20-some thousand projected in one month, I mean, obviously, over the course of a year, it's going to be a whole lot more than that, which is plenty to cover it without any extra staff work.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Yes, so just to clarify, if you don't have the registration fee, then we have no idea who's, who has an Airbnb, because they could be on one of six or seven different platforms. So the only one that we know about are the ones that we're connected with, with the Airbnb platform.
Correct.
So then there could be all kinds of them out there that are not, they don't have to be registered, so we don't know who they are. We have the same...
So the negative of that would be, is to say, if there's lots of other platforms, so if you register, so if you have to pay this fee, you're not collecting anything if you go to an outside entity, like a VRBO or whatever it is, other than Airbnb.
Right.
So we don't want to discourage people from not going to Airbnb, because if they go to Airbnb, we're automatically, they're collecting the lodging taxes. So...
But if they go to another platform, they won't have to collect the lodging tax.
They don't have to collect the lodging tax. So let's not charge...
Why would they use Airbnb?
Because they like the service, they like the thing, because 80, 90% of them are already doing it. And so I don't, so the extra fee, so let's say you're just renting it out by yourself. You're not going to go, if you go to Airbnb, they know who you are.
The VRBO has a big slice of this market, too.
I think, what did you say the numbers percentage was?
It's 90% of the air market.
Yes.
The Lynchburg market is registered with Airbnb.
All right. Thank you. I, Councilmember Nelson, and followed by my, Councilmember Wilder, and Councilmember Wright, and then I would ask that we call for a vote if there's no further discussion from those who make the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Got a couple of questions. Is this registration anticipated to be a one-time registration that doesn't have to be renewed each year?
It's an annual, correct. It's an annual registration.
And other than collecting a $150 fee every year, what's the purpose to make them re-register if nothing's changed?
I'll let Kent touch on that part. My piece of this is getting the third-party information to where we ensure equity throughout all the folks that are providing the service. And that's, I mean, that's what I live by, is fairness and equity to everybody. So that's, that's my purpose. I'll let Kent touch on the other side.
And I think that's the same with us. Obviously, people come in and out of using the platform, so this will change monthly. So just an annual registration would not give us a good, that'll just give us a point-in-time snapshot of who it is. The idea is that you would have a list that you would monitor to see, are we getting, you know, we went from 354 units in August of 17, excuse me, 18, to 483 in May of 19. So there, the piece of the annual registry is just to do it. Now, again, the cost associated with it is to offset staff costs. You can do that either through the lodging tax piece or by requiring the registration to, to offset all of it or to subsidize it in some way.
So the reason I ask that, if, if nothing, you've got parcel A, they register in 2020, and then in 2021, nothing's changed, there's no additional data that's going to be needed to put into the city's database, no staff time is required to just do nothing, why would we charge a fee again?
Yeah. So I'll just say that our staff cost, and we don't know what we don't know, obviously, but what we've given you is a staff cost for the initial startup. We do think staff cost would go down through, over time, maintenance, but I don't want to in any way convey that there would not be staff work every year trying to go through that list and trying to follow up on the, on the, on any violations, trying to manage the registry just as a whole. So I want to make sure that we were clear, maintaining that registration does require staff time. How much, it's just difficult to tell until we see the overall volume and what, where platforms are.
What would be the problem with having the fee when the registration is initially made, or if ownership changes, or if some other critical piece of information changes about the property that requires the data to be modified? And the reason I ask that is, for me, the importance of having the registration is not so much to collect the lodging tax, but to know who it is that are operating Airbnbs for the safety of those guests, as well as for the need to contact a responsible host or owner or managing party if there's a problem with the property. And if they haven't registered, that's guesswork for the fire department or the police department or the first responders, the medic units, knowing who we are supposed to call and who's in charge. And I think that, for me, is the importance of having a registry. And if somebody hasn't changed, you know, all of that important data, then there shouldn't be much or any staff time dedicated to the case. But if somebody comes online, changes ownership, then it's appropriate to change that information. And that's when the fee would be charged. That's my perspective on it.
And I'll just...
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'll just say, again, the fee is really just subject to however you want to do it. If you'd like to charge it one time, we've proposed annual recurring because you asked us to bring you what the cost is to offset, based on the information we have. This is the best staff cost that we have. We can provide you with updates with that if you want to do an annual occurring, if you want to try it as a one-time, or if you want to do no fee at all. Those are all options that are available to you. The registry does not require that you do a registration fee.
I would be in favor of the registration with a fee, but when, but only at the initial registration or whenever there's a change in ownership or status.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember...
If I could just, one thing, if I could, and I appreciate, you know, not being concerned about the lodging tax, but unfortunately, every month, the 20th of every month, I'm interested in lodging tax. So even though that person may be doing the business for 10 years, unfortunately, in my world, I have to deal with that business every month. So it's, it's very important for me to keep up with whether they're still doing the activity or not. And that's, but that's a monthly occurrence that I have to live with.
But if you, if there's one registration and nothing changes, you can presume they're still doing the same thing?
Correct.
Year in, year out, and you get the lodging tax, but they don't have to pay another fee?
Correct. As long as they file and pay, I'm happy.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wilder, and then Councilmember Wright.
Do you have a particular staff recommendation? I know these are options. Did you have a particular staff recommendation?
The first recommendation was just the lodging tax.
That's, that's correct. Staff originally proposed this as collect, do the voluntary, as an alternative, do the voluntary collection agreement and a no-fee registry. So that was the alternative council asked us to bring back options for.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And also, the information you need, can you, you can gather that from the lodging tax that's reported from the Airbnb? Is that correct?
Where I'm getting that information from currently is what they've remitted to the Department of Taxation for sales tax for the month of July in the amount dedicated to the activity in Lynchburg.
So that gives you the numbers that you need? Is that...
Correct. Well, that allows me, what makes me more comfortable is I can utilize the numbers they're reporting to the Department of Taxation to back into what I feel like they should be remitting to us.
Okay.
As long as those two match up, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Wright?
Thank you. So just a... One, sorry, two clarifying questions. This is one registration per property? Or, so for example, right, you could subdivide a house into multiple different, you know, into, you could rent out, if you've got three bedrooms, you could rent out each room, you could rent the top floor as a suite and the bottom floor, you could have multiple permutations of any building. And so is this registration fee suggesting for one, one structure?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, auxiliary structures?
We will allow auxiliary structures.
See, rather than being here all day, that's why we... Do the original staff recommendation, the motion that's on the floor, to just do that rather than this. Yeah, because you're right. It's a lot of extra...
And I'm sorry for, to ask for the clarification, but the owner occupancy thing changed some of what we're dealing with here. So we do believe now you can do a...
In order to have, in order to have an auxiliary dwelling or, yeah, auxiliary dwelling, it has to be an owner occupied. Does that make sense? So the other thing, just so you understand, the importance of having the host compliance list is to know where all of them are, right? Only Airbnb remits the sales tax.
Right.
So we have to have the list to be able to be equitable, which you talked about earlier, so that, so that they can go and contact the ones that registered on VRBO or Craigslist or whatever it is, to get them to remit the sales tax. Without the host compliance list, we can't do that.
But again, just to, just, but just to re-ask the question, is this for one, this is for one structure only? Just to clarify.
I'm going to tell you, in general, it's for one structure, we're going to have to look at the, what this piece has done for accessory dwellings now that the owner occupancy requirement's been removed.
And then to Mr. Martin's point, you want a registry so you can triangulate between all these other different sources of information to make sure that people are remitting their taxes.
Yes, sir. And I think he's really driving home the point that whether we do a registry or whether we charge a fee, we still need the third-party service, no matter what, because that gives us those locations.
Right. In which case, you know, I'm, like Councilmember Nelson, I'm in favor of a one-time fee to establish the service, but not for an ongoing. I favor annual registration after that, but not a fee. I don't see that that really adds a lot of value, and then that could be offset by the increase in revenue coming from taxes that are being remitted. So I'm in favor of a one-time $150 fee.
All right. So the motion on the floor, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wilder.
First, I thought I heard you say that you were not really recommending a fee, but now I'm hearing you saying you do need a registry. So am I confused there?
Well, for my office, what I need is the host compliance information from the third party. Now, getting a little different information, but if we're going to do the compliance piece to ensure equity among everyone providing the service, I really need to get the host compliance, because that's the only way I know who's providing the service.
So for the third party?
Correct.
Matter of paying $13,000.
Which you could pay from the lodging tax, right?
Correct. Plus $10,000 in staff labor, labor.
So we've added a new cost onto there.
No, it's part of that 51.
Okay, part of the 51. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Councilmember Perro and...
This is just a technical question. So is the $51,000, is that going to be your cost, no matter what the fee is? If the fee's zero, do you have a $51,000 cost? Uh huh. Oh, well then.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And it was I who proposed both imposing the registration fee as well as the tax collection for the lodging tax when we met in August. In response to Councilmember Wilder's question, Mr. Knuckles, I think you said you learn the information when the taxes are remitted, but the Airbnb does not remit the identity of the owner or the property address and those things. They just send you the tax, don't they?
That is correct.
So there's no information about any particular Airbnb in the city of Lynchburg that you gain knowledge of by virtue of receiving the lodging tax?
From Airbnb, that's correct. What I would get is the amount of lodging tax and the amount of the dollar per night.
So knowing who's out there and where they are and how often they do whatever they do, that needs a registration. You need a registration in order to know that.
Well...
Who's operating in the city.
For the, for the, well, for those folks as well, which is really a community planning concern, but I would need it for those other organizations that are not remitting through Airbnb.
Right. But Airbnb doesn't give you any personal information about anybody.
They do not. But it, but host compliance lets us know what platform the individuals are using. So we could sort of...
And host compliance is a, a fee of 13,000.
Third-party, sorry. The third-party...
Okay.
So that's where we do a lot of extra to do something with that 10%. Is that what we're hearing?
Well, just to give you a little more numbers from Alexandria, and y'all might not like numbers, but the third party says Alexandria has 500 units. Alexandria knows they have 280 reporting through Airbnb. That leaves 220, of which he's spending a lot of time looking out for these 220, of which he has 70. And he's bringing in less than $10,000 in revenue from those 70 out of the 220 that are left. So it's a ton of effort, ton of effort, but fairness and equity means a lot to most of us, and that's...
And so that's why we just go with the lodging tax, is that's why the original recommendation was going with the lodging tax, not spending a lot of staff time and money to collect that other 10%, and hopefully, everybody, the other providers will also remit lodging tax. If we have a problem with it later, we can add it later, and that's why the motion on the floor is to follow staff's recommendation, original recommendation of not implementing a fee, but actually collecting the lodging tax revenue. I think that's going to be the cleanest way without putting a lot of burden on our staff, allowing us to collect a lot of revenue.
All right. Well, thank you. And the motion on the floor was made by Councilmember Wright and...
It's Councilmember Helgason.
Helgason, Perro for this, okay. State the motion again, please.
So the motion was to not have a registration fee, but to follow the original recommendation was to adopt the lodging tax revenue through the host platform of Airbnb.
All right. All right, thank you. So, we would have no registry on this vote, and so, I will ask that we call for the vote right now. Please cast your vote. And the motion fails five to two. So, I would now ask for a motion regarding the registry and the discussion that we just had. Councilmember Nelson.
Madam Mayor, since I brought this up the last time we talked about it, I will move that we impose not only the lodging tax, but as well as a registration fee along the line of $150 per registration, it would not be annual.
Thank you.
And that would be anytime someone has to change the registration for some reason, new owner or different circumstances.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And there has been a second. Councilmember Nelson, do you have any further discussion?
No, I think I've said about all, anybody wants to hear.
All right. Councilmember Wright?
Ma'am.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hegelson? And then after the discussion, we, I will call for the vote.
So, with this now, we're now talking about the maximum registration fee, which means the fact that two entire days, 100% of the revenue goes to the city, so provided you're all in agreement with that. Secondly, what you're, there's no de minimis. So, what Councilmember Nelson said before, if somebody only does a couple times, well, they do a couple times, they got to pay the fee. You're also talking about now staff time, keeping up with this. You're looking at lots of different extra fees for somebody that doesn't have to do that when they're renting their property out on a long-term. I mean, you were talking about equity. I mean, we don't, you don't have to pay a fee to the city to rent your property long-term. I don't understand how this is equitable for a renter of property, and so now you got to all of a sudden have this new monitoring system and new revenue, new expenditure level. It just, it's going the opposite. Then you got to look at the $150, is it per property? Or do we want people who are doing one, that are doing a great job, do it again, they now have to pay another fee for another house? You have them, as Councilmember Wright said, if they're using an ancillary structure, those are two separate entities on Airbnb. If you have the upstairs and the downstairs, that may be two separate entries on Airbnb. You're looking at now charging somebody for the ability to do something which you don't charge anybody else. So, I really, I'd hope we would kind of think about this for a little bit. I recognize that we sometimes like to get revenue. I think we should be very thankful of some of the revenue that will be coming in because of adding this to the lodging tax revenue, as Council, or as our Commissioner of Revenue just stated, 20 to 20-some thousand, just for one month. Adding more on top of it, we're going to have a tendency to get less of what we want. I think what we really want is more people renting their properties that are paying lodging tax, which generates more revenue to the city. This isn't going to, I don't think it's a good thing. So, it's just another fee that's added on top.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan.
I would suggest that we have a $150 fee, one-time fee, but then have all of your properties under the 150 and not have, not have individual, for if you have four properties, just pay one. The idea here is to get them on a registry of some sort, right? That would be mine.
All right, thank you. So, is that something for consideration by those who made the motion? And second?
I should be in amendment.
Right, would you offer...
Amendment to your motion.
Councilmember Nelson's motion.
So, if I, I might want to amend my own motion, because I clearly wanted to recognize the infrequent exemption, and I think seven days a year should not require anybody to register if it's a very infrequent. And the only thing, the city will receive the lodging tax for that, but there's no need to enforce the statute or the ordinance against someone who, just as an occasional renter. So, I would modify my motion to say that less than seven days does not require registration and would not, there'd be no efforts to enforce against that if we know it's, unless we know it's clearly more than seven days. The second, Mr. White, wanted to slide that in.
Yeah, I can call Mr. White up.
I just need to clarify, we won't know that information. We do not know how many days people rent. So, I just need to...
The neighbors would.
Okay. But we're going to be asked to bill the person a registration fee without...
It would really come into failure to register rather than billing for the registration. So, if there's such an innocuous activity associated with the house that clearly may have been rented during graduation or some special occasion, the city has no reason to go after that.
So, and I'm just trying to follow, I'm sorry, I just, if it's a one-time registration fee, then that's something that we can enforce. We can identify the operator who's hosting. We will have no, if there's an exemption of anything after that, we won't be able to know it without doing some pretty extensive research.
Well, I don't think we...
On an annual basis.
I don't think we are asking the lodging tax police to go running around trying to figure out who's going over seven days and who's not. If there's a problem, and it's clear that an owner is using their property for short-term rentals, and it's clearly over a week, accumulates more than seven days, then there's going, there's somebody going to bring that information to you, and you will be able to make a case against them that they're doing it and they didn't register. They're not in your files. I think it's self-solving.
Okay.
Just like you don't want to...
Are you exempting them from the one-time registration, though? If it's less than seven days for a year?
Any registration, any registration is not required if it's less than seven days a year, just like we don't go around neighborhoods and see who's had, who had more than two yard sales in a year and go after them for sales tax. It's not a problem unless someone says it's a problem and comes to the city and has evidence that it's a problem.
I would caution, I think that will be very difficult for us. I think our default would be, we wouldn't, we would assume everyone would not be renting for seven days. They would have to tell us if they're doing more, or the neighbors would have to complain. It's, we just won't know that, and it could change year after year.
So, you're saying it would be an enticement for fraud?
Yeah. I mean, if you want a one-time registration fee, I think we can do that. We can, we can identify an operator, and we can say they're operating at a location, and because they're operating at a location, they need to register. That's no problem, and then there would be no recurring fee after that. If we start to add in exemptions afterwards that change every year, we will have no way to identify what, we'll have no way to know the number of nights they rented, if they, when they switched to a new owner, did they then rent seven nights? We just won't have that information.
Well, if you think it's problematic, I'm not going to include it, but it does bother me that the circumstances that Councilmember Hegelson talked about with the hurricane evacuees suddenly being here and persons were putting them up on a short-term rental basis, whether it was through a platform or just made contact through relatives, I don't want the city to be bothered about that sort of transaction or be looking for registrations and so forth. I think we, we need to be tolerant in terms of that sort of accommodation of what we know at times, there's going to be a huge volume of guests to our city, but each and every one of them shouldn't be required to register as a full-fledged Airbnb. That's my perspective on it.
And I would just say, if you feel strongly, then we could reduce the fee. I mean, because again, it's subsidized either way, so the idea would be you could reduce the fee down, or you could do a no-fee, but the staff time involved with monitoring something that starts and stops will be very problematic. So, please.
I wouldn't want to reduce it, because you've told me that those are the actual costs, in fact, the costs are more than the fee would generate. So, if that's the case, then we're putting this expense on all the taxpayers, the margin between the two and all taxpayers because of one particular slice of activity, and that's not what I want to do. I want it to be equitable, and those who play, pay.
The other option would be, we would mail the registration on July 1. That's our current plan, or we would mail it in June for the July annual registration. At that point in time, if the person discontinued the operation, so if they just did it briefly, it might be self-regulating, and that standpoint, that could come off the list, sort of thing. But, but again, just the, not knowing the number of days, that, that's where our concern would be.
All right, thank you for that. And the other point was the Vice Mayor Dolan's proposal with regard to making it single-owner while, rather than single-property, so that one owner can register all of their properties. That's consistent with my basic principles of why we have it, so we can put our finger on and know who's accountable, who we contact, who is responsible to deal with whatever issues are at the property, and that's not made any better by having a fee and registration for all the different properties if the same owner has them all. We've got that information, and it should be, fit the model that I think we want to remedy. Those are my only comments.
Thank you. And I would ask that we go ahead and call for the vote. I understand that Councilmember Perro and Councilman, if I could ask you all just to limit your comments so that we can get to the next items, because it is my goal, seeing staff sitting here for two hours, listening, and we have two more topics, that we will finish even if we start at 7:30 and no break. So, I understand, I want this conversation to occur, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I would like to have your conversation and your thought, but I would ask that we call for this vote by 6:05 if we can, so go right ahead.
So, Mr. Knuckles, you threw me for a loop when you talked about the registration and the amount of effort it takes to track down all these, and you, and then you kind of talk about it being equitable and how you're applying the fee. So, Airbnb is 90% of our, 90% of Lynchburg's market is Airbnb. There are some other markets out there somewhere. It sounds like this consensus among council will be ratified by a vote, that the Airbnb fees will be collected. So, to be fair to the other, the other 10% that's out there, they, as hopefully, will be registered, as well as all the Airbnb providers will be registered, and then you will attempt to collect lodging tax from that 10%.
Well, we, we will set them up just as we do any other transient provider, and they would get the booklet for the year, and then they're really required to collect and remit on a monthly basis.
Okay.
But my, go ahead, go please.
So, they'll get that information, and then your, your staff will be working to, to collect that as well?
Correct.
Okay. And it's $51,000 a year just to, just for that effort, so the fee then offsets that amount?
Correct.
So, I'm going to go in the complete opposite direction of, of this conversation, thinking that that needs to be an annual fee, so you can offset this cost, because that cost isn't going to go away. It's not just, you know, you're going to have to set it up, you're going to have to, you're going to have to monitor it, you're going to have to do the work that you have to do. So, I, I think it's actually, you, I'm going to disagree with this motion, I'm going to vote against the motion, but for completely different reasons, that Councilmember Hegelson has stated that he's going to vote against it. I think that we need to, if we're going to do it, we're going to need to do it right, and you're going to need to get compensated for it, because it is going to take a bunch of effort, and where else is that money going to come from? Lastly, you have excellent taste in neck apparel, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is excellent. Great tie.
And if I could get a piece of clarification, the seven-day, does that include the lodging tax, or is that just the registry?
That's not part of this motion, is it?
At this point, no. I withdrew it because of the concern.
Oh, okay.
But the, the second portion addressing Vice Mayor's point is part of the amendment.
So, you amended the motion to have one per property owner, was that?
On an annual, on an annual basis.
And in, and a, and a one-time basis, not annual?
My motion was, was one-time.
One-time as opposed to every year?
That's right.
Okay. Now, now, the one question I do have, back to the, is, is if somebody does the hurricane thing, and so now we have a hurricane coming, and we're going to rent some, rent it out to somebody this weekend, and so they say, man, I'm going to be gracious, I'm going to be a good Lynchburger, I'm going to rent out my house, they sign up on Airbnb, people come up there the next, that weekend, only to realize later, uh-oh, we're out of compliance. We just violated the law, we didn't pay and register ahead of time, $150 fee, we didn't do this, and we just lost all our money that we were trying to be a nice steward. What, what do you do on that? I realize this motion doesn't, or this, the wording doesn't have anything, it says that you got to do it before July 1st each year.
Yeah. So, so as, as the ordinance is proposed, hosts would be required to register by July 1 every year. So, if someone did it now, we would do the look back on the previous year, and we would send them something that says, hey, it's come to our attentions that you've become a host, move forward. The host then has one of two options. They can say, yep, you know what, I want to continue to be a host, I'll pay my one-time registration fee, or they can say, nope, I no longer want to be a host, we'll continue to monitor the registry, and as long as they don't come back up, that would move forward.
So, if somebody registers on Airbnb?
Yeah.
You know, lots of things, people don't realize, you got to, you know, they just moved up here, they didn't realize you also had to register with the city of Lynchburg.
Right.
So, they rented it out for five days, so it was a small portion, but now they realize they are out of compliance. That, that's what I'm talking about.
Right. Then they would have the opportunity to correct that. They would have the opportunity to say, no, I no longer want to be a host, I'm, I'm removing myself as an operator. We would take that into account, and we would, that's where the ongoing monitoring would come, yes, sir.
So, they signed on to Airbnb, but they didn't pay and register with the city, because they didn't recognize, or they did it on a Saturday and you guys were closed?
Sure. And if they want to continue to do that, then they would just pay their one-time registration fee and move ahead.
So, so because they didn't do it previously, they're not in violation?
Only because we're, we're only setting the registry at July 1 of every year. So, no, we will give a grace period on that violation. And again, it's really hard to talk about it in con, in abstract until we do it, but, but the thought is, and certainly through the first year, we're trying to work with people to get them in, and again, we want to make sure that everybody's just abiding and understands the rules, so.
And so, now with the, with the city cost, I know we have that on there, so some of that, if, is there much of a cost if we don't register? If we, all we got to do is cash the check? What kind of cost is involved with the $51,000?
Without running a registration program?
Yeah.
It, it varies a little bit, it's, it's, again, you've got the commissioner's costs, we've got the third-party costs, that those are fixed no matter what. Then we will have whatever enforcement and follow-up staff costs for the monitoring. If we didn't do a registry, that would mean that we could not enforce the three-strikes rule, so we could not enforce these things as well. You talked about the difficulty with enforcing occupancy on a short-term basis, we would not have that ability. I'm going to tell you 30,000, but I'm just, it's, it's a little bit of a rough guess right now.
So, so lots of this fee is based on our creating the registry? If we just said, hey, we're going to sign on with the, the lodging tax with Airbnb, we'll be able to collect that revenue without having lots of extra stuff? I don't understand how we got to...
The staff recommendation for the registry has always been that the city would own part of the cost for the additional neighborhood protection that it can provide through the registry. And again, how much that is, it's really tough to know until we get there, but we honestly believe that the three-strikes rule provides us with a more streamlined approach for neighborhood protection than what the zoning ordinance currently prevents.
And so, I'll stop with this, provided we're not, there are other items that he has, we haven't even got to yet. So, we're not assuming and adopting this whole ordinance, because we haven't got to the three-strikes rules yet.
No, no, sir. We, we, you moved that forward last time.
Right. We moved that forward last time.
Well, we talked about it, but you said, hey, we'll come back with some different language with regarding changes, and so I think you made some changes. And so, that's in there, which we haven't even got to, as a group discussion on, on the item.
We did not modify the...
We did clarify. You noted that your first...
Oh, we...
That's new, what you haven't even got to.
Okay. Well, what I would ask is that we take the vote now on this registration fee, and that we bring the three-strike rule back, if that is the case, because I want to get to the social service presentation, and I want to get to the capital improvement plan rating system. So, if we can bring back the three-strike issue, do we have to have it in this vote tonight, or on this evening? Okay. Okay, well, then we will bring that back. So, if there's no further discussion, please cast your vote on the registration fee.
What was this? Your motion?
My motion?
No, it's not my motion.
So, my motion got killed.
Right.
And it's a new motion.
Right, correct.
No, it's my reset.
Thank you. And the motion passes five to two. Thank you for that debate and discussion, the three-strike conversation, please bring it back to us for the debate, and Councilmember Perro. Please bring it back to us for the debate and Councilmember Perro.
So, Madam Mayor, are we going to end the debate on this topic right now and it's going to come back at a later time or we're going to move on in the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, that, okay.
Yes, we are. Yes. And also, I would like to say that because we've had so much discussion on the short-term rental and because there's been so much discussion regarding long-term rental coming in, I have some questions and, and things I would like answered about long-term rental and what we do or don't do and the neighborhoods that are held hostage to long-term landlords who will not invest in their property and the properties that we have that are tied up in ownership throughout our community that we say we can't do anything about because they are so tied up. So, when we have the conversations, and this is just me personally, about free market, free capitalism and allowing the market to go, I also want to have a conversation later about when you still have that, but it goes against the investment of properties in those neighborhoods and the property values of other homeowners coming down and/or not being addressed by rules, policies, regulations for long-term landlords. So, it's a lot that I just said, but I can break it down at another time. But I think this conversation, for me, it walks me into the long-term rental conversations in a lot of our neighborhoods and the properties that are tied up in ownership that we just lost to sit. Maybe there's some short-term Airbnb owners who would like to purchase some of those properties. And I have a conversation about what does that do for the rental market when we talk about affordable housing, which we will talk about in November. And so, I think we need to create some, some lines here of how we invest in our neighborhoods or how we expect people to invest in our neighborhoods. And so, for me, this entire conversation of allowing a lot also opens up, how do we create the same expectations for long-term landlords? And so, that's just my furtherance of, of this at a later time.
Madam Mayor, can I add to that just for a sec?
Please do.
I would just request that, for that conversation that's yet to be defined, that Mr. Irwin participate and be versed on what the city's authority is, statutory authority is on that matter? Thanks.
Right. Because we do have a conversation all the time about the freedom of people to own and do their properties, but we allow long-term landlords to hold neighborhoods hostage. So, I understand the, the question and what was just asked, Mr. Irwin, and I would love a conversation on the future of all of that. And, and I ask the public to stay tuned to all of that. Also, it was just suggested by Councilmember Helgelson that we switch the number two and number three, so that we could take the Department of Social Services next, if that's okay, for their presentation, and then go on to the capital improvement plan rating system. So, if councilmembers are okay with switching the two of these, I'll do that. Thank you. Come on forward. Thank you. And we have Ms. Tammer, Mrs. Tamara Rosser, Director of the Department of Social Services. Thank you, Mrs. Rosser. And thank you all for being patient till we got to this part of the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Vice Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Tweedy.
We're all confused at this point. I get it. Don't worry about it.
Why, we don't start this thing over. Good evening, Mayor Tweedy, Vice Mayor Nolan, members of council. This evening, I will be presenting the newly developed social services dashboard information and data. And I'm going to start off by saying that I'm going to be presenting a lot of information, because it is a lot of data out there. So, in the interest of time, I'm going to take my time, but I also understand the time that you guys are, are looking at right now. I would be more than happy to come back and to delve deeper into some of this information. So, just an overview of the dashboard information. So, just to provide some background for you, so the Virginia of Social, State Department of Social Services operate what's considered a state-supervised, locally-administered model. So, the state, they set overall policies, they provide guidance, and they monitor the performance of the local departments. So, the Departments of Social Services are divided into five regions and they are classified into three levels. Level one being a small department, number two being a medium department, and level three is considered a large department. We are actually in the Piedmont region and we are classified as a level-three agency based on the number of our employees. We are also considered a fully deviating agency, which means we are city employees, we are not state employees, and we follow the city's employment policies and procedures. Our local board is actually an advisory board. You guys appoint the members to that board and they aren't considered a administrative board. So, the state has developed this dashboard for each local Department of Social Services. This information will be presented quarterly and the whole idea of the information is to assist local departments in understanding what they're doing well, some of their challenges and some of their opportunities to do some things differently. So, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide an overview of the local department's dashboard information and also to identify some gaps in staffing that will be key to us meeting these minimum mandated measures. The data is actually divided into four areas. Public assistance, which are the benefits that we provide to our citizens, Medicaid, supplemental assistance to nutritional program or SNAP, temporary assistance to needy, needy families or TANF, and childcare. It also looks at our family services measures, the number of children in foster care, the timeliness of our first contact when we receive a child protective services complaint, the percentage of children we have in congregate care, group homes, hospitals, residential facilities, our monthly foster care visits, how well we're doing placing children with relatives, the number of our family partnership meetings, the length of time children remain in foster care, and how current we are on our court hearings and the number of cases we have that are associated with a termination of parental rights or TPR. So, lots of data, lots of information. The dashboard also provides information on our human resources, the target number of positions that we have in the state tracking system. It also outlines the number of field positions we have, the number of separations we have, as well as our vacancy and turnover rates. The dashboard also provides financial information, which I will not be going through that today, because that's a whole nother work session because of the complexities of the DSS, if you guys are interested in hearing more about that. The data also provides a trend analysis of, of the data as well as a snapshot in time. And that would be the third quarter data that we will also be looking at. So, I do want to say that this dashboard is a work in progress. They are constantly looking at information to include, tweaking the information, but this dashboard was completed with input from lots of different people. The state commissioner, our regional managers, as well as our local department directors. So, it is a work in process. So, let's jump, jump right in and take a look at the information. This first chart looks at our Medicaid assistance and it shows the timeliness in which we processed Medicaid applications from March 2018 to March 19th. The thing with our benefit programs is they are really concerned about timeliness to ensure that citizens are accessing the benefits for which they are entitled to. So, our target for timeliness with Medicaid is that we do it in a timely fashion at least 97% of the time. And you can see from this, at this particular time, we range from doing it a low of 79% of the time to a high of 89% of the time, but we did not reach the target for processing our Medicaid applications on time. This is a very busy chart and it looks at SNAP or our food stamp applications. Again, the target is that we do it 97% of the time. So, this chart is going to take a look at expedited SNAP applications, regular SNAP applications, and whether or not we did them on time. An expedited SNAP application is one that we have to process within seven days, because there is some emergency situation that exists that merits us doing that. For a non, non-expedited application, we've got 45 days in which to process it. And you can see that, for the most part, SNAP application, we don't do, we do pretty good. We're, we're meeting our target. This particular chart shows, provides a good visual and it allows for comparison from the previous quarter to the current quarter. It also displays the colored flags that signify whether or not we have met the target. And as you can see, we do pretty good meeting the target for SNAP and childcare and we fell short on the Medicaid and TANF applications. This particular shot, chart also shows our SNAP error rate for that short period of time. And one thing with, with these benefit programs is that we're under constant review to make sure that we aren't making mistakes, to ensure that people are getting what they qualify for, but also to ensure that we aren't giving people something that they don't qualify for. So, it does track our SNAP error rate. The Medicaid error rate that you see on here, that's something that's under process. And again, they continue to tweak this data. So, these two charts, it, it captures the monthly trend data for the same benefits from March 2018 through March 2019. The data in red, or the percentages that you see in red, indicate that we did not meet the targeted percentages for that particular month. We are certainly challenged, again, with the timeliness of our Medicaid applications, meeting target for SNAP, and do pretty good with our TANF applications. Now, I want to remind you that Virginia just expanded Medicaid a couple of years ago, so we are getting applications from many different places and it stands to reason that we will be a little challenged now timeliness with, with Medicaid. This is the same information for the third quarter, as well as our third quarter averages for each one of these measures. This particular graph shows the downtime for VACMS that you can see at the bottom. And VACMS is the Virginia Case Management System. So, whenever the system goes down, we cannot process applications. However, we aren't exempt from the timeliness of those applications. So, really, when the system goes down, we're at the mercy of the system, but there's no consideration in processing applications on time. So, we are still held to that same standard.
How often does the system go down?
How often does the system go down? The system goes down not quite as often as it did when it first started, but the system still goes down.
Daily?
I wouldn't say daily, but it goes down probably monthly, on average, monthly.
For how many hours, roughly?
What would you say, Preston?
It goes down pretty much weekly.
I'll get you to come up to the microphone.
Come on up. And Preston Sellers is our program manager over our benefit programs.
So, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. The system goes down, it's pretty, it's weekly that we have a regular system downtime. And normally, when the system goes down, it can vary from an hour to even sometimes it's system be down for an entire day. And it's a state-run system, so we're kind of at the mercy of the state when that system does go down.
Okay.
Nice.
But we aren't exempt from the timeliness standard.
Great. So, they give you a pass on your requirement, but you can't do your work between, you know, for six to hours or so.
Exactly. And this SNAP timeliness is a federal requirement. So, it's a standard that's set by the federal government.
Next question, when the system comes back up, do we have the staff to do the double input that was missed during that time or is that something we're looking at as well? I mean, we, you know, we, one locality can't challenge the system and what it does, but if we don't have the staff to input when it is up and make it on time, is that a staffing issue, budgetary issue, or are you getting to that?
I'm getting to that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but we can challenge it, because we've got, it's, it's a Virginia system, so...
Well, we can.
Yeah, we can, we can bend somebody's ear.
But I'm just, yeah, we could do that and try to get the staffing level up to where we can accommodate while we're challenging our representatives or presenting to our representatives.
Well, I wouldn't want us to just go with that being that, that the end goal. I mean, because if you've got a bunch of people that are sitting there not doing work because they can't, we don't want to hire more people on, on a system that you're not sure if it's going to be working, you know? If there's an ability to have flex time, that may be a good solution, where you could say, hey, the system is going to be down for six hours and everybody can go home and then we'll come back at a different time. That may be a better solution.
I can assure you that there's no downtime where staff don't have work to do.
No, I'm saying if the, if the machine is broken...
If they can't work in the system, there's plenty of other work that they can do in terms of getting files in order, scanning documents into the system, into the scanning machines. There are plenty of other things that staff can do, so...
So, the, so the system being down is irrelevant, then?
It's, it's relevant, but the work that involves in us processing case and receiving applications, entering them into the system is a, is a huge part of it, but when the system goes down, I assure you that staff aren't sitting there doing nothing. And Mrs. Sellers can speak a little more closely to that, because there are other responsibilities and tasks that they can do to prepare the work for them to enter it into the system.
Yes. When, when the system does go down, eligibility doesn't stop. We still have customers coming into the building to, for complete applications, whether it's on phone, in person. Also, we do, although the Virginia Case Management System is down, we still have to scan documents, because we are going through a paperless system now. So, if a customer brings in verifications or even an application, even though we cannot initially process the application as far as determining eligibility, we can still gather the information, meet with the customer, particularly for SNAP, we can do face-to-face interviews or even Medicaid, we still have to process the applications or receive the verifications that we need to get. So, the staff, for the most part, although they're not actually inputting information in the system, they are constantly doing something as far as helping the citizens of Lynchburg.
Thank you. And I'm sure you're going to get to the point, but is there a consequence of not meeting? And I know we want to hear the rest of our presentation.
There is a consequence. And as a matter of fact, currently, the state of Virginia is under federal sanction for SNAP errors. Now, what they're doing is they're looking at a point in time from 2018. So, in 2018, the state of Virginia had more SNAP errors than the federal government had set a threshold for. So, as a result, the state of Virginia is being sanctioned by the federal government to the tune of about $3.6 million. Also, during that same period of time, Lynchburg had more SNAP errors than was allowed for SNAP applications. And so, right now, we find ourselves in corrective action mode. We had to submit a corrective action plan to the, to the state to ensure that our SNAP errors would be reduced. So, there are consequences when we don't meet these standards.
We should have snap error rate is...
Zero percent.
For that particular point in time.
October to November.
Right. So, you know...
So, that's good.
So, they can do it.
That's great.
It's, it's great. And I, and I'll take any time we have zero errors, but the federal government is always working a couple of years behind. So, the sanction goes back about a year ago. So, we are in corrective action mode. So, yeah, and again, this, this dashboard data is a snapshot in time. But you're right, for that particular time, we didn't have any errors.
Open slides?
All right. Where am I? Uh-huh. Okay. Childcare is another benefit that we provide. And this particular slide shows the monthly trend data for childcare applications, the number of children served, as well as the, the number who share the cost of childcare. And we do a good job protest, processing our childcare applications on time. And fortunately, we don't have a waitlist for childcare. Same information, just looking at the third quarter, as well as our third quarter averages for childcare applications. So, let's take a look at some of our family services measures. And these are our child protective services measures, as well as, as our foster care And these are our child protective services measures, as well as our foster care measures. This particular graph shows the third quarter data for the timeliness of first contact when we receive child protective services complaints, the percentage of youth we have in congregate care placements, and our use of transcription services. Now, what that is, is a dictation services that the state pays for that allows staff to pretty much record their notes while they are out in the field, which should help them with their note-taking and keeping track of what's going on in the field. So regarding the timeliness of our first contact, depending on the priority level of the call, we have between 24 hours and five days from the time that referral is received to make first contact. So if it's a high-level priority, we've got to go out within 24 hours to make that contact. If the child is under the age of two, we have to make that first contact within 24 hours. So if it's a lower level, then we do have a little more time to go out and make that first contact. Congregate care placements are something that's really outside of our control. If we're serving more children who have high-level needs and they need to be placed outside the home or can't be served in foster care, they're in hospitals, group homes, any type of residential placement, that's something that, if the need is there, then we place our children there. And this slide also says that within the third quarter, we had thirty-two adoptions. This slide actually shows our trend data for the number of children in foster care, children under the age of eighteen, those over the age of eighteen, and the total number. As you can see, the vast majority of our children in foster care are under the age of eighteen. You can also see that we have an upward trend in the number of children in foster care. Our recent numbers indicate that we have about 145 kids in foster care. Now, this foster care number is a very fluid number. We have children coming and going out of foster care pretty constantly.
Vice Mayor Dolan has a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Would you have children in foster care over age eighteen?
Yes, ma'am. You can stay in foster care up until the age twenty-one. And that just changed a couple of years ago.
Oh, wow.
So this here shows the trend data for the timeliness of our first contact. And you can see that we did better in some months than we did with others, but we still aren't meeting the target. And this relates back to not having enough staff to get out and respond to these calls in a timely fashion. So our staff are required to make monthly foster care visits to all the children in foster care. Fifty percent of those visits have to be made in the residence in which they're providing. So you can see them in school, you can see them in these other places, but fifty percent has to be made in the place of residence. We do really good with our foster care visits. As you can see, we are meeting the target for the total number of visits, as well as for the children who we see in children in their homes.
With the foster care, what about like the... Private companies? Like, do they do the same thing, like Patrick Henry?
They provide the homes.
Yeah.
They do.
Patrick Henry, yeah.
They do.
Okay.
But if they're in our care, we still are responsible for making the visits. Yes. But we do contract with them for the homes.
So if they do more, I mean, if we do less, they could do more?
If the children are in the custody of a local department of social services, whether we are contracting with a private agency for the home, or it's a home that we have recruited ourselves, we are still responsible for making the monthly visits.
So there could be the opportunity for us not to do that because a private entity such as Patrick Henry did more of those other items? Don't you're saying?
No. If a child is in the custody, which means we've removed them from their home, they're in foster care, we are the legal custodians for those children, it doesn't matter if they're in a home that we're contracting with through Brayley and Thompson, or Patrick Henry, or Humankind, it is still the responsibility of our staff to make those monthly visits.
So what are they doing?
They are providing the homes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. They're providing the homes, and they are ensuring that the children get to their counseling sessions, their appointments, and the whole nine yards. But we are responsible for keeping our eyes on the children because they're in our custody.
But your requirements go down if somebody else is doing that, or not?
No, sir.
We are legally responsible for identifying the children who are placed in foster care legally by the courts and by the state. That's our responsibility as your agency.
Right, yes.
The third-party providers are the persons you're talking about who then provide homes and/or services.
Correct.
But we are, you, Social Services Lynchburg, is the responsible agency for determining who is removed from a home.
Yes.
And who is kept at a home.
Right. And if a child, like, we have 145 kids in foster care, give or take a few, of those 145 children in foster care, foster care staff is responsible for making those home visits. Now, we work very closely with the agencies and have good relationships and rely on them for a lot of information, but the mandates of these measures that are coming down from the state and the federal government, that responsibility rests solely with staff.
So as an agency, we can't shirk our responsibility and go toward privatizing third parties removing children from their homes?
As it stands right now, only a local department of social services has the authority, in conjunction with the courts, to make those type of removals.
Thank you.
All right, so we talked a little bit about congregate care. So the target is that you have fewer than sixteen percent of your children who are in foster care in congregate care. As you can see from this, some months we did good, some months we fell below the target. Again, congregate care is dependent upon the need of the child. So these next two slides reflect our monthly trend data for our family services measures, pretty much what I've talked about already, the timeliness of first contact, our congregate care placements, our kinship care placements, which is something new. There's a lot of emphasis on us working with identified family members who can take these children in, who are willing to take these children in. And the state is working really hard to make sure that we recognize family members, other relatives who can take children in, and treat them as foster parents. The number of family partnership meetings, which is something fairly new, we are mandated that any time there's a movement of a child, like if he changes placement, then we are required to get the family together to have a conversation around that, with the goal of the family assisting in the planning of services, but they also buy into whatever those services are. So this is looking at our family partnership meetings, how long our children remain in foster care. It also looks at the number of children who have court hearings, established court hearings, as well as the number of cases with a termination of parental rights. So again, lots of data that helps us to really see how well we're doing and helps us to plan for some things that we can probably do better. As you can see on these two charts, there is a lot of red, which means we haven't met the targeted measurements for that particular domain. I will say that this information and data is for the third quarter that ended in March. Now, I just recently got fourth-quarter data, and I can see where we are making some progress towards meeting some of these standards. So this data just shows the same information, but it's our trend data. Oops. Let me go back one, got ahead of myself. So again, this is the quarterly results for our family services. And you can see even that there's less red in third quarter than we saw in previous quarters. And while we are making some progress, we are going to be very, very challenged to meet a lot of these minimum standards with the staff we have, quite honestly. So the information also provides data on our human resources. And so this shows the monthly trend data as it pertains to our staff. The target number of administrative positions, benefit programs, and family services positions as is outlined in the state's local employee tracking system, or LETS. So you can see that in LETS, we have targeted 175 positions. And all of that's based on population of the size of the city, the number of kids we've had in foster care over a number of time, the number of CPS calls. It's a number of factors that play into this 175 positions that are identified in this state employee tracking system. As of August, we had 140, August 2018, we had 141 filled positions, far less than what's targeted in LETS. This data also shows the number of separations we had, as well as our monthly turnover rate and our vacancy rate.
So you've got a 20% vacancy rate?
Yes.
It's a lot of staff.
It's a lot of staff.
Martha Field.
We are, I mean, first of all, the work is hard. And this 20% vacancy rate is probably, well, it's not probably, it's based on the number of positions, that 141 positions, and it's also, it's based on that 175 positions. So we're, as long as we are...
So you've got 141 filled positions, but that's your vacancy rate of 20%, which means that you've got additional 20% of your 141 positions that are unfilled. Is that how the data is to be interpreted?
It's 20% of the 175 positions.
So if I...
Thirty-two positions.
Right.
Or thirty...
According to what's in LETS, right now, we have about 141, 142 positions that are, that have been approved through the local budget process. And there are two different processes because we are state, we're city employees. So what we have approved through the budget process is about 141, 142 positions. What is shown, what's been approved according to what the state says we need and what's in the LETS system is 175.
I see. I just ran the numbers. So that's the state's idea of what our vacancy rate is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
That's not an actual vacancy. That's not an internal number.
And out of 140 city positions, how many are filled? What is the vacancy rate for those positions?
We probably have right now about four or five positions vacant. Yeah, we've got five. Yeah, we've got about five positions vacant right now.
Five is not 20%. So is there a 20% vacancy rate? Or is there, are we talking five people?
We've got about five vacancies current.
Of the 140.
Of the 141.
One.
Right.
Okay.
Right. And I can't do that percentage in my head.
But the 20% is based on the 175.
But the 20% is based on the 175 positions that are in LETS.
Yeah, that I'm tracking.
Right. And you know, we experienced some...
Does somebody in the back actually think that it's something a little different?
Yes, I was just going to say that our actual vacancy rate really does range from about 17 to 20%.
Mm-hmm.
And generally, though, when you're looking at the data in LETS, it's actually using all of our filled positions, which includes temporary positions as well.
Right, it does.
So generally, that vacancy rate, that percentage, is usually based on turnover that's related to full-time positions. So it's probably a fair, to say it's about 17 to 20% is a pretty accurate estimate based on full-time positions.
Okay.
And that's over a course of time, probably, I think we looked at the data, excuse me, from last year. And so that would be fairly accurate. You're looking at a window here, which is about six months.
So with it, sounding like the questions that would be appropriate, maybe this is Reid or somebody that follow up, is the fact of what is the actual budgeted positions versus the budgeted positions that are vacant? And so if a lot of it is internally vacant because of they weren't able to hire people for whatever myriad of reasons, maybe personnel, personal issues, it may be because they don't like the job, or lots of different things, what that actual number is, I think that's, would give us a much better handle on deciphering a 19% vacancy rate.
Yeah, and that's just basically budgeted positions.
Yeah.
Minus actual dollars. Budget dollars minus actual.
And that would look at, for the budget time, you know, wouldn't we come up with that?
We could very easily do that. What I would say is that, I think what the point is, is that what the state is saying, what you need to run a Department of Social Services is this number. Here's what we've budgeted, and we probably are lower than that based on that.
What my point is, is acknowledging that, but if we have a, if our internal vacancy rate is de minimis, then our metric should be a whole lot better, too.
Right.
And again, this is, I agree with you. And for the most part, we can recruit, you know? Because if you look at what we pay relative to the region, we do pretty good. But again, the work is hard. And so we've got staff for any number of reasons. I mean, people can leave because they have personal reasons to leave, they decide they want to do something different. So people leave for various reasons, but the work is very taxing.
Can I just say that, because, you know, folk talk, we're a small city. I hear it's overworking a lot of people. And they leave for other opportunities that may have less workload, a less case management load. And so that difference of a 30-some positions, I'm just wondering if, at what point does the state hold us accountable to where we are short, based on we have not funded the necessary positions that they expect? And then we see a turnover in our actual numbers because our workload is high because of case management and other issues?
And I'm going to get, I'm going to, thank you.
You're going to get to that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Ryan.
No, you're fine.
So it sounds like these are really compounding problems.
Right. That if the state is saying that there is a, we really ought to have 30 more positions to accommodate the workflow, well, it's no wonder then people are stressed. And this is also, by the way, the first time I'm hearing that we're paying competitive wages, so that's interesting to, interesting data point for conversation. But it sounds, I think, it sounds like the fundamental point here is that we need more people to process.
And I'm definitely going to speak to that. So I just want to say that this dashboard data is just one piece of a very large puzzle of data. We, this is a new format for us to see the data. This data is going to be shared with city managers, county administrators, boards of social services. So we're all trying, we're all working through this data as it's being presented. And again, we're under constant review for everything that we do in social services, from SNAP and Medicaid reviews, to what feels like monthly reviews in family services. Over the years, you know, we've been challenged with losing positions, while the responsibilities and mandates have just increased over the time, like something as simple as doing credit checks for every child in foster care over the age of eighteen. Now, it sounds pretty simple, but it's time-consuming. We now have to give consent for psychotropic medications for children in foster care, something new. So we have to identify that person who can give consent. And it's going to default to me, and I can tell you, I am very uncomfortable giving consent for medications, but it's something that the state is now requiring us to do. We now have to coordinate family partnerships... We now have to coordinate family partnership meetings and all of the, the people that have to be invited to that. We are now being asked to be more engaging with families, more engagement, more engaging with our relatives, in addition to attending all the required court hearings, attending family assessment and planning team meetings, coordinating family visitations, conducting monthly visits with, with our children, coordinating services, meeting with service providers, meeting with attorneys, there's a lot that goes into managing these cases. So we are making progress, but we're doing it at a cost, a cost of paying staff overtime because the mandates don't diminish, just because we don't have enough staff, the staff are paying overtime. Equally as important is the physical and emotional toll it takes on staff to meet all these mandates, if you're working 50, 60 hours a week, and these are non-exempt employees, which means we have to pay them overtime. The amount that we're paying overtime, we could certainly use that money for additional positions. We're also more concerned now about the secondary trauma that staff experience when they're doing this work day in and day out, so we're real concerned about the burnout and people burning the candle on both ends to get the job done. It's simply not sustainable for us to continue to try to meet these minimum standards with the amount of people that we have. So just to put things in perspective, for the most part, our family service workers, we have 10 in child protective services, around 13 in foster care. On any given day, they are averaging 10 to 15 cases on their caseload. Industry standards, as set forth by the Child Welfare League of America, says that those caseloads should be between 10 and 12. So we well exceed what the standard for those are. And like I said before, another consequence of us not meeting this standard, at some point, it's going to hit us in our purse. You know, the timeliness of these, of these applications, or the lack of timeliness of these applications, at some point, will result in penalty, which could be monetary penalties to this locality. The consequences of not meeting these standards in family services will result in monetary penalties, us not being able to feel, to receive full reimbursement for services, or could actually end up in a payback of, of, of money for us not meeting these, these And we're experiencing that now with family services. Again, the state is under sanction from the federal government for not meeting some of these federal standards, and that trinkles downhill to the localities. So we aren't the only ones in this shape, so I just picked a couple standards to compare, to see how we compare to Danville, Roanoke City, Bedford County, Campbell County, and Campbell County. And as you can see, with the timeliness of our SNAP applications, we all do pretty good. Okay, so that's just one standard. You can also see that when it comes to timeliness of first contact, we've got some work to do. So we are not in this alone. Localities are experiencing increases across the board in the child protective services number, number of applications, it is a trend across, across the state. So before I entertain any questions, and I know it's getting late that you may have, I do want to take, first of all, I thank you for allowing me to present the information. It's a lot of information, I rushed through it pretty quickly. I would welcome the opportunity to come back, to spend some time, if you want to look at family services data one day and take a look at the benefit program one day. I think it's important information that we share with the public, and so I'm willing to come back. I also want to take the opportunity to thank staff, who, who are here with me today, they do this work day in and day out. They are dedicated to keeping kids safe, making sure citizens have the benefit that they are entitled to, making sure that we dot every i and cross every t, because if we don't, then not only are we looking at a sanction, but it could very well jeopardize the health and the safety of our children. So I'm proud of the work that they do, and I commend them to do the work that they do against some very tough situations. So I went through it pretty quickly, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have, and I'm also happy to come back.
I see Councilmember Wilder, and I would, I would ask that you do come back.
Okay.
So that we can have further discussion, so I'll ask staff to, to make that happen.
Okay.
Councilmember Wilder.
I just want to thank you and your staff for the work you do for our children, our community, also for all our community residents, because I know I've been a foster parent for 20 years, so I've seen the, the hard work of the, of the social workers and the caseworkers and what they've done for our kids and our community, so I'm so thankful to be having you here. Just one quick question.
Okay.
A comment has been made that, that persons from the counties move into Lynchburg because of the social service benefits. Do you see people coming, moving to Lynchburg because of that?
One thing that happens in the state of Virginia is every locality has its own Department of Social Services. There are about 123 Departments of Social Services across the Commonwealth. The same benefit that they can get, the benefits that we offer, that they can get in Lynchburg, they can get in Bedford County.
Okay.
They can get in Campbell County. The benefits are the same, the policies and the processes are the same, so if someone's looking to get SNAP, they don't have to move to Lynchburg to get SNAP.
So you don't see the people coming to Lynchburg because of social services?
Not for these particular benefits, that they really don't need to.
Thank you, I just want to clarify the point, thank you.
Any further conversation?
So I can just follow up really quickly.
Yes.
A question about the number of all our positions. So 146 positions that are authorized in social services, including public assistance, but I think what's, what's really important there is to remember that, that many of those positions are probably filled, but oftentimes, we may, as we turn over, it takes some time for those folks to get up to speed, just like any other job we have. It's not, you know, it's not just a simple job, even the, you know, especially the benefit stuff, there's a lot of stuff to learn. So it takes a lot of time, even if the position is filled, to really be up to speed and be ready to go, and that's why, you know, you might see some of the numbers that you do.
Right. If we have, if we hired a benefit worker today, they would not be responsible for a full caseload for another 12 months.
Oh, that's right.
Because of the training, and just because of all the details that comes into making a determination for benefit. So lots of required trainings that not only our benefit program staff have to do, but our family services folks as well.
Thank you. And question, you presented the data, you've presented the toll that it's taking on our staff because of the lesser number that we have. Where is the opportunity for innovation at, in the work of social services? And do we discuss that? Do we talk about it? Is it, we are mandated to do certain things, but if you all are doing what you do over here, and if the school system is seeing some, some things that, that they're connected and correlate, but we don't have the opportunity to work with it holistically, and I know that we have third-party service providers, and that may be another time for conversation about the expectations of those service providers, and if they're being paid with funds, that should expect increased or improved results. Are we expecting that from the third party? How are we addressing that? But I'm just, I'm lumping all of that under the word innovation for how we deal with families, lessen the numbers, or lessen our burden through innovation or different operations.
There's lots of innovative work being discussed as a result of the state being under this sanction for some of these measures, so we are part of the state's process to develop a performance improvement plan, so we are working very closely with the state, as well as some of our regional departments, to do just that, to look at how we can do business differently, how we can partner differently. I am real excited about the school task force, because I, I'm hoping that as a result of people coming together and looking at everything, then we can talk about how can we best partner with some of our high-risk families and these high-risk, risked children that we all see at some point. So I'm optimistic that we can have those conversations, and we look at it daily, because the bottom line is, we have to get the work done regardless. So we're always trying to do the work to the greatest efficient with the resources that we have.
And are we seeing our highest-risk families in certain zones or areas of our city that are more easily identifiable for concentration of innovation or different opportunities?
We took, we took a look at that data a couple of years ago, and we looked at the number of child protective services calls that were coming in, and, and mapped it, mapped it out, and it, they did indicate that these children were attending a couple certain elementary schools.
Okay.
So we do have that data, thanks to GS, we can get that data updated pretty quickly. So we would love to engage in a conversation on meaningful collaboration with some of our partners, where we are sharing everything, and everybody has a little bit of skin in the game. So I'm, I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you, look forward to you coming back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, thank you, staff, for sitting through all of this, so thank you. Next, we have the Capital Improvement Plan Rating System, which I think will go very quickly, maybe, hopefully?
Can we get to that in another town here?
I mean, it's, we've got 10 minutes to...
Yeah.
Okay. Is 7:15 a break for everyone?
Well, we got Councilmembers United at 7:30.
Right.
I mean, there's lots of things, we should have meaningful discussion on this, we shouldn't just, I mean, there's no...
Okay. All right, so I apologize, I'm glad we did let that conversation, thank you for that. If we can, is there anything that will delay you all if we delay this conversation?
This is just an informational item, so...
Okay.
We'd like to get it in front of you, so that you know that as we move forward with our capital planning projects in the future for the future budget processes, then we, you know where we're coming from, but, you know, it's not today, it doesn't have to be.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that. All right, next we'll have roll call, and I will start with Councilmember Wright, I think, last time I started, the other side.
No items, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Wilder.
Just real quickly, I'd like to announce about our partnership with the Lynchburg Economic Development Department, as well as KDC One, which is an employer on federal, on Florida Avenue. They have, KDC currently has 200 open positions, so we're really excited about that. So what they're doing, they're partnering with the community, partnering with Jubilee Center and Economic Development in the city of Lynchburg, and they're holding a job fair on Saturday, September the 14th, from 11 o'clock until 2 o'clock. It's for the whole family, having some basketball games, some, some career assessment information, door prizes, things for kids, free lunch, and also you can come and talk about those 200 positions, you can fill out applications, you can talk about relationships with KDC, which used to be Tritec in our community, so you can hear more about those open positions, and what they can do to even be a stronger partner in our community. So we're really glad for that, thank you for Marjette and her staff for coordinating that and bringing it to the Jubilee Center, to the persons in our community, since we're located also on Florida Avenue.
Thank you, and that's hashtag hire Lynchburg.
Yes.
Hashtag hire Lynchburg, all right, thank you. Vice Mayor Dolan?
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson?
There are lots of things we could talk about, but the one thing I would mention, if you saw your email this afternoon from the police department, our police chief has been recognized as only one of 23 fellows in the...
Fellow?
Fellows, as members of the inaugural class of members of the Civil Society Fellowship. It's a three-year term, and he is clearly being recognized for his skill set and leadership to solve community problems in America.
Thank you. Thank you, and congrats.
He just left the room.
He just left, yes. Councilmember Perrow?
Very briefly, just like to recognize the Rotary Club of Forest, who set up the Field of Honor at Automated Conveyor Systems in Lynchburg. So if you drive by Old Graysmill Road, it goes, it was from September 1st through the 14th, they have, I believe, 1,200 flags on display there. Each flag is for a service member from the area, and they are striving to include all public safety officials. Chief Zudma spoke, Chief Wormser spoke. At the event, it was a very nice and well-attended event, and it is remarkable to see when you drive by Old Graysmill Road, all the flags, you can't miss it, they play taps every night at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, and Councilmember Hockelsohn?
And following up on that, the library is doing for World War I and World War II veterans, the recording and the scanning of documents to put in the archives, which is pretty neat. I'm going to bring my dad's records from World War II, because the building was burned down, and all those records were lost in St. Louis, which is crazy, and so add some of his combat records.
Thank you.
I think that's Thursday, by the way.
All right, thank you very much. And I have a couple of announcements. First, we did do a tour of two apartment buildings today, not all of council could be with us, but we did tour, Councilmember Wilder and myself, the Seven Hills and the Garland Roads properties, which are being developed into lofts and apartments, and they are doing a great job, that's all I can say. Garland Roads was my elementary school, so to be back in the hallways, I thought of some teachers, but the, the developments are going along, and I wanted to see those personally for myself before they started leasing, and so that's why I requested the tour. Also, we had Get Downtown, so thank all of the staff, all of the community organizations that did that, all of, everyone who came out, it was just a great event, and as usual, so thank you all for the planning and the logistics that go into that. The Main Street renewal will begin Monday, September 16th, so everyone just be aware and keep their eyes open and understand that we're going through change, and, and, but we are, we are feeling and trying to make it as least of an inconvenience as possible. I know that's, that's kind of difficult for some people to understand or believe, but we really are, and so thank you, staff, for working with our businesses and our residents to understand that that will begin on Monday, thank you. And to that effect, we are adjourned until 7:30.